Bill White Dan and stuff, I didn't understand.
The Army Engineers are, you know, the soldiers. The Corps of Engineers is a different brand. They're a different funding and everything.
Yeah, well, they're pretty cool. It was a good tour. Is that who you talked about? I saw your picture with two, three women on Facebook. Was that one of them?
One of them was, yeah.
That's that one meeting, the hand meeting?
She was a commissioner in a different county too, a few decades ago, and then...
Do you guys want to give back to John Grace while he's here? Has a field bill for the jury?
Yes, I will. Yes, I will.
Deb Ortiz stopped by and she said that the chamber did not give the other grant that they had hoped for, so...
So we have to approve that one now?
Um, yes, if you guys would be willing.
Okay.
Grant for what?
Remember, we had approved the web fund grants and then we approved them except for the one because they had it explained that they were not going to use the money if they could get it elsewhere, but now they didn't, so they want the money. So I'm going to call the meeting to order for November 25th, 2019. I'm sorry, we did technically come to order because we had a destination meeting at the landfill, but now that we're reconvening, so...
That was a loose order. This is formal order.
If you join in the collegial legion. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Looking at the minutes from November 18th.
Madam Chairman, I've read the minutes and I make a motion to approve them as written.
I will second. Is there any discussion on it?
No, I think so. I think I'm okay.
Okay, those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Vote aye, motion carries. We had approved grants from the web fund omitting the $6,107 to the Lincoln Area Chamber of Commerce. At this time, I would undertake a motion to go ahead and approve that. We were waiting on paperwork and they did come back. The web fund committee had contacted Dawn and said they would like the funds.
So we need a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the web fund disbursement for $6,107 to the Lincoln Area Chamber of Commerce.
I second that.
Further discussion, that is out of the interest fund for the wind farm account. Those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Give that back to Dawn, please. I have a bill from, let's see, these are North Central Regional Planning Commission mail out. This would be the hospital.
Oh, yeah.
I did go to the hospital meeting.
I had some come up and I...
That's fine. I was there. I kind of, I wanted all of us to be there, but yes.
I should have been. I was...
It's okay. I just think that it makes a bigger impression when our board goes. Not that we should have to, because I think the proper structure is probably that they report to us what's going on periodically, but we do send one of us, and I was there, so that kind of worked out.
Yeah, glad you were.
We weren't able to speak during the meeting. They wanted to hold all questions and comments until the meeting agenda had concluded, which was fine, except I really didn't get any feedback on some of the things that were said. And I would say my biggest concern is there's intention for the administrator to come to us to ask for operating funds. And at this time, it's my understanding that we give operating funds in January and May. I think Dawn corrected me, January 25th and May-ish.
Well, normally we distribute out with accounts payable, so it'd be the end of January.
And the end of May.
Yeah.
So we do two dispersments per year at about 60/40?
Yes.
And what we had assigned for 2020, the budget that the three of us worked on was a total of $500,000, so they'll be getting about 60% of that come January. What I heard at the meeting though is that the intention is to ask for money immediately due to the need for operating funds. At this point in time, I believe we have dispersed 100% of what we had allocated, which was $571,000-ish for 2019. So I'm not sure where you would say that money would come from. I don't see it coming from anywhere. We don't have that kind of, I don't even know the amount. He didn't say what amount he was going to come asking for, but we know last time he had asked for $150,000, I think.
Could we legally, since we budgeted next year's funds, the $500,000, could, is it illegal in an emergency situation to give a portion of that this year?
I would be against that.
We don't have, yeah, we don't collect it.
We don't have it. We don't have it collected yet, okay. Okay, that's what I'm asking.
Right.
We have, and I'd like to raise the issue and expand it to a bigger issue. Senator Moran was in town and he came specifically, well, he does all of this stuff, but he was invited specifically to visit the hospital board and to take a tour of the administrator and the board members, which he did do. We were not notified, so that Randy could not go to that meeting, and I think that's wrong. So now if he comes and they had a meeting and they were discussing finances with a US senator, we should have been there. If we were not there, they would have made some decisions or suggestions that are detriment to the county commission budget process. And I think that's wrong. I think we don't need to make an issue that next time we have them in here. Further, I don't think that they have been responsible in their finances this whole year, and I don't believe that we need to give them any more money. They just have to find a place to find it. If they have to lay people off like the administrator, then they should lay the administrator off. Keep your healthcare going and stop to pay for the administrator and those kind of people. It's not our fault that they overran the budget. They didn't plan it and they did things that were not ever approved by their board. I would not give them any more money.
What's your opinion?
I stand with you on those issues. I think, I sound like a broken record, but there was a misunderstanding that because we made a budget cut for 2020, that it put them in a current financial crunch, and that is not how things work. You can't say that because you don't give your kids an allowance next year, that that's why they overspent their allowance this year. That's not how that works. So again, the three major expenses that they did not budget for was an increased salary line item for their provider, which not only was it increased because they replaced two, they put two in where there was one, but they also had expenses to pay one while that person was on a leave that was commissioned by...
And they could have done that in October a year ago if he had done it correctly instead of drawing it out towards...
And the board never participated in those decisions. I know there were some executive sessions, but if they made decisions in executive session, that's wrong. It's completely a violation of open meetings. And even if they didn't make the executive decisions in executive session, it appears as though all those decisions were made by the administrator. If they're going to delegate that kind of power to the administrator, then they have to take on the responsibility of seeing that they overspent because they gave that decision-making power to someone. So at this point, they're going to need to find out where those funds can be taken out of their own budget. I did a quick timeline of about 10 years of what we've put in as a county and then what's been paid out just on the bond. I was just doing comparison with income from county tax dollars payouts with bond payments that the county is backing. And the first couple of years of the bond, we still gave them more money than the bond payment, but from 2012, 13, 14, 15, we were actually giving them less money than what they had to come up with to pay the bond. So only since 2016, and again, now we're paying them more than the bond payment, only since then have they been back to absorbing county money for operations. So for periods of time, they've been very self-sufficient in balancing their own budget, and we were really only doing nothing but paying for their expansion and renovation project for a while. So to me, the increased expenses are decisions that were made. I mean, the other, oh, I mentioned the three things. The one was the doctor's expenses with the provider's contract. The other one was the 340B program, which they didn't pay back. And then there was a third thing that we had outlined. Do you remember what that was?
Oh, yeah, right now. Well, Dr. Goney, until, his payments ended in middle of October.
Yeah, oh, they had a head hunting fee there too, but that's kind of part of that.
And they contracted the group to overlook their, to look over their bond payment.
We had to hire a consultant, and that was 20 some thousand or 17,000, whatever.
And the attorney fees have been unbelievable. I mean, I didn't actually do comparison back into years prior, but I know this year was a lot of money. And this is my concern with that. The board isn't meeting with the attorney. They're not having an attorney come to the board meetings. So that means all these attorney fees are being racked up for one person to be on the phone with an attorney. That, to me, is not good governance as far as the board should know what the attorney's saying.
Absolutely not.
I also questioned about...
What, how much money they would be short or anything like that?
No, he did not actually mention a number.
They didn't get into the numbers.
I just know a couple of months ago when he was here, he asked for $150,000, I believe, if my memory serves me. And I'm not sure, he didn't use a number. I don't even think he distributed a cash on hand balance at the meeting. I didn't see one. So they did their, well, let's check.
Yeah, go ahead and look at that.
In addition to that, I did ask about our CORA request, and he wants $12,000 to provide us with copies of the contracts, please. Copies of the contracts, and then I, remember, we had talked about getting two years of reports on what their, what did we ask for? The write-offs, so that we kind of knew what percentage of their income was write-offs due to not having any payments. And he wants $12,000, so I said, we had talked about changing that to just inspecting them, but he said he never received such a request, which I'll have to open the email here.
We're unable to provide any funds until we have the information in our hands, period.
And he said he won't give the information until we have funds. So my new suggestion is let's just withdraw, and I already started an individual request. I'll continue to do that. There's also another private citizen request, and he, the administrator, said that he wasn't going to respond to individual requests until he finished the commissions project, which could be several weeks. Well, you cannot put off someone's CORA request because you have another CORA request. I mean, I think our own, our own open records officer can attest to that. So I think we should just officially withdraw our requests for the CORA because we're not going to pay the funds. We can make a new one, one at a time, to inspect certain documents. And I think the biggest thing is, it's my understanding that he's already letting people go, employees. And we still don't know in a public session what the new contracts were signed for that replaced the old contract with the old provider. And I understand it may be more money, but I think we're talking more than double.
Was there any information about Mr. Granzo's status, who was retired at the end of this year, hasn't he? Is any news on that?
You know, surprisingly, they did not discuss that, and I really...
And if they were researching for another administrator or CEO, as they call it, you haven't heard anything about that?
You know, we were barely finishing this COMA-CORA discussion when they kind of wanted to adjourn the meeting, so they did so abruptly, and I really didn't get to ask that, but that is one of the things. They did not say they have anyone...
Well, we have a month and it's...
I know.
Yeah.
I know. And in the last meeting, they said their searching mechanism was to go through the current administrator, and I'm confused about that. You'd think with such a huge budget, you'd want to professionally get, I would venture that you should say, spend more money on getting someone who wants to operate the hospital efficiently than spending all the money they spent to increase providers by numbers in such as, I mean, I'm still a little confused about their expansion too. There was mentioned, he did mention, Mr. Granzo mentioned, that you went to him and asked about putting together a five-year plan.
I told him I had a plan. I want his input.
Uh-huh.
I thought it'd be after Thanksgiving week that I'd be able to talk to him.
Now, does he already have materials he wants to give you, or are you going to sit down and collaborate about?
I want to sit down and talk to him. I don't want anything pre-prepared. I want to talk, sit down and take my own notes.
Okay.
I have heard rumors that, and maybe I shouldn't bring rumors up, that instead of retiring, he's going to be extended until such time as they find a new administrator.
Well, then maybe the suggestion is they save that amount of money and do a little bit of management themselves. I mean...
We shall find out. Are they not on the ticket today? Next week. It's next week.
Next week, yes. Okay, so the cash, the month ending 10/31.
Steve is...
Okay, cash assets, month ending 10/31, $384,247. But last year, at this time, it was $1,140,728.
Where did it go?
So there's $756,000 less cash in hand this year.
That's why they had to get a consultant.
Well, and their accounts receivable is about $100,000 less for this one month.
Now, they're not getting the income we did before.
They're down a little bit on their allowance for doubtful accounts.
I thought we were drawing people from the surrounding counties in their hospitals.
Well, that's the intention.
I thought we were already doing it. I heard him say that.
He did say that, but LaDonna actually chimed in, and I think what the point she was trying to make is some other people are coming as the result of an overflow. So if someone has a full clinic, occasionally we're getting that person kicked over because it's not that much farther. You can get in sooner for driving the extra 40 miles or whatnot. But I don't think it's really a draw as in people leaving practices to come to this one. It's the overflow issue. Yeah, yeah. But I think it was presented by him at the hospital meeting, or at the special meeting we had, actually. Yeah.
And because of the transition from our previous provider a year ago to new ones, that some patients, you know, decided to go elsewhere. They say maybe not as many, but our revenue is down, right?
Well, see, those are numbers that they're allowed to present. They don't have to say who the patients are or what the services were, but they could just say percentage-wise, we're down 10% of the patients.
They can give the exact number. They just can't do any identification.
Right.
Name or service number or whatever.
Well, and I think the bigger concern is what are we going to do about it? Because we don't even know, I have heard that the contract is two years for the new providers. I don't even know that that's, I haven't verified it with my own site. But basically what I'm saying is we've locked ourselves into two years of paying this increased rate. No matter how wonderful they are, it's whether or not we can afford that.
Well, we are done with the 340B, are now, aren't we?
I believe that's true.
And also, our past provider, Dr. Goney, is over with. His contract's ended in October. So that should save us, save us some money there.
$240,000 a year was his payout, so that's $20,000 a month.
And we were doing a lot in that 340B, if you look in there.
It was like a $200,000 payback or more. I just rounded that up.
It was like $30,000 a month. It was like $3,400,000, like total.
I didn't know that. I thought...
Well, I could show you the previous ones, but those are home.
I don't know how many months it went on.
Maybe it was, went up to different times, more or less, you know.
They're saying their fund balance, their operating fund is about $500,000 less this year, a little more than $500,000 less this year than it was last year at this time, ending 10/31.
The operating expenses should be pretty close to the same, I would think. And they should have budgeted for that. You can do that very carefully, I would think. You know what those expenses are going to be.
Well, and they also, we have due, we've got different, several nurse practitioners. Didn't we? I don't know if that's extra, but I think we lost some too, so I don't know if we have more budget than...
You were hiring APRs and you were getting rid of lower level nurse practitioners. But even so, in your operating budget, that should be phased in because you know what's going to happen. You know how much that's going to cost.
Do you know what this line item means, deductions from income? Because they're $50,000 over on that budget.
No, I don't know what that is. Those are the most confusing accounting documents I've ever read.
They're vague terms.
Well, you get into this healthcare budgeting, it's confusing stuff to me. I'm sorry, I can read and see that stuff and... Like that, like that line item, I don't know what that means.
Yeah, deductions. So Dawn, do you think that means they could be counting their deductions as a dish, as a separate line item from their salary line item? You wouldn't know it by not knowing the, but...
I wouldn't know that, but we do...
We have separate line items for deductions?
Because we, that's, it comes out of Fund 34. So, well, let's rephrase that. So let's say county general, out of my salary, my deductions come out. What's coming out of my personal paycheck goes into a clearing account, and then it clears itself when we pay their payables.
Do we have a budgeted line item for that?
No.
Okay.
But the employer's share of it is being budgeted, so could it be the employer's share?
That's potential, yeah. It could be like the, yeah.
They're part of the employment insurance.
Yeah, the seminar, yeah.
Well, what did, Mr. Brand, Senator Brand came here, what, did they ask him for more funds, federal government?
I don't know. I don't know.
You haven't heard anything?
No, I had coffee with him, and then I saw him again in the hospital. I was over visiting and saw the whole administrator, all the board studying there in one place and walking down the hall. And they had a board meeting with Jerry in the meeting, and I didn't have an opportunity to ask him why you weren't there.
Yeah, I never heard anything about it.
But I'm certainly going to raise that issue next time he comes in front of the commission.
Well, they don't probably consider me part of the board. I'm representative of the commissioners. But yeah, well, yeah, I'm a representative to that board. I should have been there. I asked him, but I'm...
I guess my problem is with the entire situation, I'd like to see what the five-year plan is. And it's concerning because the person that's ending now, we're asking to look into the future, who maybe doesn't have as much vested interest. But I still think that people can contemplate those things.
Maybe we should ask the board, like Mr. Serene and the president, Mr. Houston, what they're long-term...
I just want his ideas to start out.
Yeah.
What I need is a one-over-the-world picture, and then we've got to get down to the nuts and bolts, and that has to go to the board. In our case, I'll talk to each of the department heads, and then they'll have to talk to all of their people to verify and validate what they've written. If you don't do that, then we won't have ownership all the way down to the lowest employee, and we need everybody to have ownership of this plan. So I got to do the one-over-the-world first and then go out and farm between each one of the departments. But yeah, no.
My concern is I'm getting the feeling that people think there's this expansion and this growth plan, and I'm wondering why that seems relevant when we have a shrinking population. And we have a lot of competition. We have competition in every county around us that's in driving distance that some people already doctor there. So I don't hear a lot of conversations about what we can do to maintain a healthy and robust system internally. I hear all these ideas about how we're going to expand and, you know, just like the new clinic concept. No, there's reward for expanding your physical footprint because that's the mechanism by which critical access hospitals are receiving part of their funding. That may not last forever. In fact, there's been a group working for five years through KU trying to put together a plan to propose to the legislature to say, "Could you stop funding critical access hospitals this way because it puts a burden on us? You're asking us to spend money in capital expenses, which increase the overhead over time just so we can get a better reimbursement rate."
Right.
It's not a good long-term plan.
Well, you got to get the money to pay for that capital improvement.
In the first place.
Where's that coming from?
Well...
You know, they want to spend $2.5 million so we could get another $300,000 a year.
But it never pays for itself.
Medicare? Yeah, well, that's what they're talking about.
That's why they're talking to this specific senator.
Yeah.
Well, this specific senator, since he was elected as a representative many, many years ago, has always had as his number-one priority farms and number-two is local hospitals and healthcare.
Yeah.
Continues to do that, and they know that, and they'll have an avenue from him to see if they can influence what's going on. If you want to influence healthcare, you got to take our senator at a traditional level to do that.
Oh, I don't oppose them meeting with other legislators, but the idea is there can't be an assumption that the local tax dollars make up the difference for what the overhead costs that they're not being able to cover by operational expenses. And us decreasing it to $500,000 next year is really putting us more back in line with the original jump that they got. And some people were really confused about what the Pony Express Pipeline meant. It's part of our utilities base of our income, and unfortunately, if that ever goes defunct, that cuts our entire budget by a hefty amount that we couldn't recover in taxes. So that only means cuts from there. There are a lot of things that are, you know, dependent upon things stabilizing into the future with those kind of income sources. But...
When I do that one-over-the-world, the first couple pages, the three of us like to sit down and go over to make sure it's the direction you want to go.
Yeah.
Well, I, like, I've talked to them up there, and I'm for the hospital. I think we all are, but I think we have to recognize, like you said, our position here where we're at geographically. We're close to three hospitals within a 40-mile radius that all offer more benefits than we do. Boyd, Ellsworth, Slade all offer more benefits, like surgery and maternity. We know we can't do that, so we have to, I think, understand where we are and offer what we can do. I think they're trying to compete with those, and we got to grow and stay up with those. We can't do that.
We got to stay critical access.
And we can't guarantee over our patient base, like you say. You can't stop people from going to Boyd, Ellsworth, and Slade. They're going to go where they want to, and that's just where they are.
So I was doing some statistical reading on some healthcare things, and one of the things that I came across, and I don't know how accurate it is, but it's got to be within a margin of error, but about 80% of your healthcare costs are for your immediate primary care need. So it's not necessarily those specialty things where the majority of the income comes from in the total market. So if we can maintain some sort of sustainable base to provide that service here, it doesn't mean everyone's going to choose it, but it means that it can be reliable and it can be up-to-date current, but it can also be efficient. To have a never-ending expansion plan doesn't really seem feasible when you're working with a shrinking population.
I tell you, you got to stay with critical care, and that's what we are, and that's what we need to stay, and we need to work on that to improve that. We cannot expand that. And the clinic, as I understand, is going to be a pediatric clinic. Well, we only had one baby delivered in Lincoln County, as I recall, this year. That's not much of a base for a $2.3 million pediatric clinic.
I want to clarify to you so people don't jump on you for that. We've had, we've had between 20 and 30 a year new young, you know, like babies not born, not born here.
They're born in Slade.
Yeah, they're born wherever.
That's right.
But I did, the numbers that came from the health department were 20 something, and then someone did some research and said it was closer to 30 something. But it's between 20 and 30 a year, but they're not necessarily being born here, and they are, a lot of them seeing pediatricians wherever they're born.
In Slade, sure.
Yeah, in Slade. And regardless, that's still only 20 to 30 a year, potential maximum. And having a pediatrician isn't necessarily a bad idea, but having a full-time pediatrician
Can't afford it.
is confusing to most.
Well, is it financially feasible, what we pay versus what we get?
Right.
You got to get, everything goes down to money.
If you have 40 kids, 50 kids a year, that's one a week.
That's still a question.
Pediatric care, and that's not going to keep a pediatrician busy. One customer a week doesn't work like that.
Right. And I do know, there's probably the thought out there that, well, that person, that provider can see more than just pediatrics.
I would agree with that.
But they can, but again, our census numbers, which they're in here somewhere, like you said, there are only so many per day or so many per week. And that, we've not seen a great expansion in that, no matter what, over the last decade. It doesn't matter who the providers have been or who the administrator is. You have to look at the demographics. And so there needs to be that five-year conversation about what is the plan for sustainability? Not necessarily growth. I don't really see that option of growth.
I agree.
The capital expense it would take to make an initial, an initial investment to provide something that would be competitive, like you were saying, will never return on that money.
Well, we're never going to get that many more patients I'll pay for, so why are we going down that road? We have to understand where we're at and try to have a hospital but maintain what, in other words, to sustain it. And I think it'd be efficient.
But I think our hospital board needs to be addressing these questions, not you and me. They need to be looking at this. This is their job to figure out what kind of healthcare we're going to need in the next five years. We anticipate the county is going to decrease in population 1%, 2%, 4% a year, pick a number you like. And that's, that's going to happen. There's nothing you can do about it. We're not going to get a new Century 21 in here or this and that, something else.
Nobody's building housing plans, right?
Anyway, maybe we'll go with that.
Okay, well, we do need to follow up on that though, so next week, we need to make sure we have those questions available. All right, we're ready for the highway department.
You want to keep that or help up to the floor?
Uh, yeah, go ahead.
I keep her. I have to keep that.
Then you better keep them.
You can, I'll keep them. If you want to stay, I'll actually come in. You want to stay later. How are you guys?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Yeah, how you been?
Doing good. How you doing?
You did a good job getting rid of that snow, I got to tell you that. Yeah, it just worked out.
Well, I did have a few people out here on Friday moving snow off the highway, Barnard, Beverly, and then around town here. So the first thing was Spillman Creek. I've talked with Southern Star Gas Company. So it's a little hard to see on this map. This yellow line here is their main gas line. And right here where it does this jog, this is 1935 gas line. This is nineteen ninety-three gas line. They're concerned about road travel and stuff over this area. But over here.
You said it might be okay?
Yes. Right here, this red line is a rectifier line that goes to down here over to the power pole that basically has sensors for this main gas line that goes through here across the creek. This pink line would be gonna need to be the edge of the road that we originally spoke with Wally about. Their concern with that is it's gonna be over the top of the rectifier line. Just the ballpark estimation I got from them to relocate this, he figured it was gonna be around sixty thousand dollars.
What's a rectifier line?
Electroline and, and it's a gas.
Just for a sensor?
It's basically sensor lines for this gas line.
And where does it go?
To a power pole over here. The other option I talked, spoke with them about.
The transmitter's on that power pole.
Yes.
The sensors are down there in the hole, they had to run up to the power pole to send it in.
Yes.
But you can't drive over top of it?
Because they would need to maintain, they would need maintenance. It's not a shielded thing. It's just the cable itself, it's not in any conduit.
An encasement or something.
But he farms over it now, right?
Yes.
So that's not hurting nothing?
He said two and a half feet deep. Yeah, they said it was two and a half feet deep at their records.
Well, they got a big tractor farmed, a heavy lot of trucks and cars.
Well, it's mainly for access or maintenance. It would be in the middle of the road. So I spoke with them about, you can kinda see a blue line here. If we come at more of an angle where we wouldn't be driving across the whole thing. He's gonna talk with operations to see if they'll be able to encase this area here, become of the cost for that. It would be more ground than we originally talked to Wally about.
Anyone else to pay for it?
Yes, because it's not in the current right-of-way.
Well, can they integrate that cable with your?
Oh, it's in his land?
Yes, that we would be purchasing the right-of-way.
You've got a culvert coming across there, right? Can't you integrate that cable in the culvert?
Yep, so here's an actual engineered drawing with survey marking. So this is the rectifier line surveyed in and this is if we shoot to where the gap is, which I spoke with them, they're, they're concerned because this is nineteen thirty-five pipe.
Excuse me, thank you.
Worried about if they're gonna have to maintain it at some point, it'll be in the roadway.
Yeah.
If we shoot it more of an angle, he's talking with their operations department to see if we could, if they could encase it and what the cost would be so we could have the road this way, instead of doing a full relocation on, but I haven't gotten a call back yet on him from that. I spoke to him last week on that. Because this alone here to move this all the way is sixty thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's it.
I had asked him, because we're gonna be closing off this section here, there's a power pole there, would it be possible to run there?
Go the other side, yeah.
He said, no, because the sensors are out every few hundred feet through this. That's what the cost is. Like, this is the main line and there's little pieces off that that have sensors in them. So it's not, the issue of getting power to there is the issue of having.
What that actually physically does on its length.
So we couldn't just go across here to this side, 'cause I'm trying to get all the options that we could come up with. So this was where we had really originally talked to Wally about. This is the one I'm waiting to hear back from on costs and then we can talk with Wally about it. So it's basically the middle point from here to here.
Yeah.
So our original road was going to come right there. Talking with them is more along this way and then talking with their actual design engineer, split the difference.
How much, and feet-wise, how much more feet are you gonna have?
We would still be purchasing an acre.
It's probably offset, yeah, between that quarter and that quarter.
Still less than two acres, right?
Yes, this one was two-point-four acres, if we go all the way to this edge of the tree line here, which Wally has already said no to.
Yeah.
He does not wanna do that. So if we come over in here, it's going to be less than two acres.
He's reasonable to do that, I think.
Trying to get all the options of Southern Star Gas.
Southern Star.
So I've been speaking with their design engineer on this, so he's gonna come with, hopefully this week, give me or next week, the estimated cost for if we push our road here, so I can approach Wally with that if the commission wants to attempt that way. But I wanna be able to give you guys all the options out there for what we can do.
Oh, yeah, that's expensive.
Yeah.
Could you pass me a pen, please? Thank you. I don't know, what do you, what do you think here?
Well, I think it kinda solves itself. You kinda have to, to get the road in, you're probably gonna have to do the, uh, sleeving up there at the culvert.
If he'll, if, if he was gonna talk with their operations, he thought it'd be feasible, then he has to speak with their operations department to make sure that they can.
Well, if they can't, then you're gonna have to do the whole thing.
We'll have to do a full relocate.
It's just gotta be done. I don't see any other option there. I think the problem kinda has its answer sitting there and you just have to pick.
How much is it gonna cost for all that though?
That's what he's figuring out for me. The ballpark figure was sixty thousand to relocate this line for encasement. And he was concerned about future right-aways and other things like that. Well, you have it, it would be through our roadway. If you had to service it, you'd just have to contact us so we can meet up there.
Well, they already have easements and everything on that now, so that's not a problem.
No, because it's in his land.
It's in Wally's land, not in our right-of-way.
But they don't have an easement with Wally?
It was more going forward, if we moved the road there and another utility wants to come in there and land the roadway,
Yep.
about respecting where their material, where their line is at.
But what I'm saying is they already has an easement for that land and so it's just a matter of whether we have the easement or Wally has the easement.
It would be through Wally 'cause it's private property.
But that's what he's saying. Does it transfer from Wally who has it now to us who purchases it from him?
And that's something I am not.
You probably oughta ask that for this.
Yeah.
The other question I have is, have you studied our agreements at all and I never have well enough to know? When we do give permission, you know, for example, since I've been here, the only thing that's happened is Wilson, I think.
Maintenance of fiber and.
Yeah, fiber or whatever. So when that company is gonna be forced to do something to its line, whatever that line may be, in order for us to have a road access or crossing or culvert or whatever, who, is that expense go on to them? I mean, is that written into the agreement? Have you looked at that?
I have not yet. I've.
Yeah, I haven't come across that.
Because we wouldn't have an agreement with them for this because it's all off of our.
It's not on, yeah.
We shot the right-of-way. So you can see we have sixty-foot of right-of-way, but you can see that line's outside of the right-of-way.
So the dotted line is the center of the road?
Yes, or center of the right-of-way. And here's, and here's the road that was shot in, right here.
That's where the road sits now.
Yeah, so the road is shifted.
Well, yeah, yeah, I see it.
So it's at the edge of its right-of-way right there.
Yeah.
Cause we have a right-of-way permit, correct, that people have to fill out?
Yes, that's what I was kind of asking, if he's looked at any of those. The only ones I've dealt with are cable lines, but we had an issue where they were digging up, trenching, putting the cable lines in along some gravel roads. And so then when they were putting the material back, they were just kinda like clumping it on top and it wasn't packed and then it was, and then it, um, you know, sinks, great sinkhole, stuff like that. So my question is if and when we need to create, let's say, like a field entrance or put a culvert in somewhere, if they have to move that line or encase that line or whatever they have to do to protect it, at whose cost? Cause we might potentially change something about
Yeah.
the road right-of-way, but their materials in our property, I don't wanna have to pay for them to fix whatever they have to do because we need to make some kinda change.
I think.
I'd have to do more research on it.
It's all grand upon and now anyway, but going forward, that might be something interesting to know.
We have experience with them on the, uh, north side of the airport over several years. They expanded, put a little pump station in there on the west side and they got a station on the north and we had to do some work with them when we put the runway across their pipeline. So we have some experience with this particular company.
Southern Star.
On easement and right-of-way, so there oughta be some stuff in the agreement you could take a look at and see how they do things.
Was that when we closed the road? Was that?
That was one of them, yeah, where they closed the road, but also the pipeline goes underneath the, uh, proposed strip. And over the years, on the west side of the road, they built a little pumping or pressure station. And on the north side of the airport, they had a big whatever that blew up one time.
Yeah.
And we've done culvert work and all that stuff with that particular pipeline company in those areas that I know about.
Okay, I'll see if I can find anyone.
Do you have some numbers for us for our cost of material and labor just to move the road?
No, because it would change based on where we put this.
Did you do any ballparking yet?
No, I was more trying to figure out what all these options are.
Yeah, then you're gonna take measurements and do that, yeah.
If we go from here to here, it's much more material than we could reclaim off this surface. Whereas if we go shorter distances, we may not need, so if, that's where the cost would change, the timeframe would change.
Yeah, we can transfer that much.
It was basically, the first step was figure out what options are for costs to relocate their line or to make it so we can move it. Go with Wally to see if he is agreeable to that and then I would put together the cost estimate for that option. Otherwise, if I put together cost estimates for all three options for our, where we're gonna put the road at, it'd be a waste of my time when we're, if we, we're not gonna be putting three different roads in. I feel like more, there's more uses for my time, I could be using it in better ways. But if you'd like.
Well, I'm just concerned about creating some sort of a cap or a projection because at some point, we're not gonna be able to afford.
Yeah.
It gets too expensive.
You want estimates for the three potential options over here for what the road cost would be?
Well, I think we're down to one option, aren't we? The tighter angle, um, and the encasement process for the, what do you call it, a?
The rectifier line.
It'd be cheaper now.
Cause if we stay with this.
Ridge in where we're at.
If we stay with, no, no.
Culvert, why not?
Cause it's gonna keep failing.
Why don't you fail?
The creek bed's still eating away there.
Not necessarily true. I don't believe that creek bed's gonna keep going left or.
Okay. I don't think we built this road crooked when we built it in nineteen hundred.
Well, that road's been there for a hundred years.
Yeah, you're saying a hundred years.
Well, how come now, how come now, all of a sudden it's flooding and washing it up?
Well, Wally said that when he was in high school, they put cars in this bank here to keep this from eating this road.
I may have asked him, we should do that.
We can't put cars in the bank anymore.
Maybe put them on the railroad car.
Water changes courses, cause I can tell you, it'll be along in my brother's barn is gonna be on.
Yeah, I could put, cause this one is sixty thousand dollar cost.
What he's saying is a hundred-year fix for sixty grand if we put a new culvert in there versus, I just.
Versus a hundred-and-fifty grand to go across Wally's ground.
Right, to move the road for, yeah. Let them deal with it in a hundred years, is what he's saying.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
No, we need to know some numbers. I think we're talking about the tighter angle, going to the, nod through the clearing over the nineteen ninety-three line.
Okay. Basically, this right here in the middle, right there.
Is that your blue line?
Yeah, that blue line here is the tighter angle one. This pink one, it would be sixty thousand dollars, rough estimate, just to relocate their rectifier line. This one would be less expensive, the operation, or the design engineer said, because they could possibly just encase the portion that would go underneath our roadway.
Mm-hmm, yeah, so get, talk to them about the blue line.
Okay.
Does that, does everyone understand?
And if they can't.
I don't think you got a lot of choice there.
No, I think that's, just come back to us with numbers.
What gets me is Wally farms over, it's no big deal, but if we drive over, then all of a sudden it's a big deal.
Well, it's, they can access it. If there's a problem with the line, they can go in there and access it right-of-way. If we have a road over the top of it and they have a problem with the line.
Dig up the road.
But it's not like it's a gas line where it's gonna be leaking. It's a sensor line, I mean, to get permission, it's not like we couldn't give them permission on a working day.
That's why I don't understand with them why it's a big deal because, well, we're farming over now. If it's a weight issue where he couldn't, he could give fifty thousand pound combine together.
Well, it's more of the, the access to repair the line if there is an issue. With it being in the field, they can just go in there and repair it, with it being in the roadway. It's a public road, do how.
You dig it out, like you do that.
That's what my concern is.
It would happen at harvest season, so you'd get to listen to Rick and Wally complain for three more months.
Well, that's all gonna happen. Whatever.
Did you run that house north of the road? Don't you gonna have to compact a road versus a field that's loose?
Yes.
Well, that's gonna put pressure on that pipeline, isn't it?
Yes, that's.
Are you saying for, for being able to drive over it?
Yeah, yeah, we gotta pack it down.
It actually insulates it from so much fluctuation.
But, but I'm thinking that might be part of the problem.
The process of compacting it, what they're worried about.
Well, I'm just saying now that there's combines driving over now.
Which is why they wanna encase it.
Uh, far ground, it ain't hurt nothing.
Well, I know, but they're traveling at one time per pass.
Well, it's gonna get more travel, I realize.
Eight hundred bushel, similar, a lot different than a combine.
Rectifier lines that are passing under roads. It can't be the only one.
It's normally, cause it's a straight shot and it's not very far, this would encapsulate almost that entire line.
Well, yeah, we wanna cross it at one point, not run along it. I get that.
Yeah.
Okay, bring us back some numbers, please.
Cheapest available way, that works.
Leave the road closed and the bridge closed.
That's right.
That's the cheapest way.
Then you're gonna have the people upset. Well, it's called the.
There are, there are more people than you think that use that road, and that's what's.
It's closed all the roads in county, or half the roads in county, and we save a hell of a lot of money and that's what I know.
I do wanna see a study on what roads can be closed, though.
Yeah, minimum maintenance, half of them.
Minimum maintenance means, doesn't mean no maintenance.
Well, I mean, but you cut down on a lot of our work for, I don't.
We watch an excavator, just dig a trench across the damn thing.
Try to make sure we do things right.
What's right and what ain't right.
Well, I'll make sure we do it legally. I don't wanna put stuff in and have someone come back ten years, fifteen years from now.
There's ten legs do things right.
Oh, I know. They all just cost different money.
And they all cost different prices.
Yeah, so I'll put costs together for that, cause I wanna keep that road open too. I don't wanna be like Sleen County where they close half our, thirty bridges and one day they close and shut down every other mile of roadway.
Well, I know, I know, we've had a lot of flooding and that's what's happening. These bridges are a hundred years old, so that's what's happening.
So.
And there are some minimum maintenance roads that don't get much travel, we could maybe restrict or something, you know.
So there's a copy for before.
Are we closing that one that was requested by Judy's?
We have given.
I have, I just haven't, yeah.
But we did already kind of clear that with the landowners or?
We started the process on it.
Yeah, I think they've talked to the landowners already and I have the red description, I just have to get.
We just need to set up a hearing and whatnot, okay?
So this is a good one for all of you. You guys can come up with a plan, with plans for staying on a four-day work week? So I looked at the next three years for holiday time. So the first option is where we stay as we were when I came in, four-day work week during the summer and winter break is a five-day week. So this, the hours there are listed of paid holiday hours per department. So with the highway departments, we would be eighty-six, the courthouse staff would be eighty, sheriff and EMS are both twelve hours for every holiday, so a hundred-and-twenty. If we stay on a four-day week, according to how it's written in our handbook, the highway department would be a hundred, courthouse would be eighty, sheriffs would be one-twenty, EMS would be one-twenty.
Okay, wait a minute, is this top box, is that two thousand nineteen? Is that what was done in two thousand nineteen?
This, yes, that was my understanding, where you guys, where the highway department was four days a week during the summer
We were, we were.
and five days of winter time.
Yeah.
So the next box now. No, no, this is, the, the year's listed above it.
Oh.
So there's twenty, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, three years in advance to see the different options, cause it does change potentially.
I see what you're saying.
So based on the employee handbook, it's option number two, where if we stay, if we stay on four days a week year-round, for the employee handbook, it's per shift, regular shift, so that would be ten hours. Based on how I've talked with other counties, how they do it, is option number three, where if the scheduled shift, the holiday falls on a scheduled shift, so Monday through Thursday, it's paid at the ten hours. If it falls on Friday or it would be, on the weekend, it would be moved to a Friday, it would be paid at eight hours. That's option number three.
Okay.
And option number four is what private sector and then some state departments do. Talking with different state departments, they pay all holidays regardless of what shift is, eight hours regardless.
Yeah.
So that's, I didn't change it for any of the other departments, just to show, I just changed highway department's figure for each one to show the differences for what the amount of holiday time hour would be. Because with a four-day work week, you have more productive hours in a day, you have more productive hours of work. Because no matter how efficient you get, you're always gonna have startup and shutdown time. So if you can do forty hours with only four startups and shutdown time, that's an extra time savings versus doing it over a five-day period.
Well, we've had this discussion in the past and my only objection is, not only, but the biggest thing, the biggest thing that I see that could be a challenge. You have rain on a Thursday, so you're doing very little on Thursday, the last day of your work week. So then your roads are a mess on Thursday night, Friday night, Saturday night, Sunday night. You can literally have four, or if you get rain on Wednesday, then you can't work on them Thursday because they're still too wet, but you're still putting in hours. So then you could potentially have five whole days, Wednesday night, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, where your roads are getting worse with the traffic and they've not been tended, but then no one's getting to them because you don't really have any work hours until Monday. So, I mean, how, how do you plan on addressing that? Cause that is a worst-case possible, very possible scenario.
Where we could be flexibility with our shifts, if we know we're gonna have a bad weather event, we could potentially move, say we're not gonna come in this Thursday, we'll come in Friday instead. That's how I've done in the private sector.
So what if half your guys get part-time jobs because they can work Friday, Saturday, Sunday somewhere?
Then they would have to take leave there. It's just like if we get rain on a Saturday. No one's there for it. Or if snow, for example, winter time, we get snow on a Sunday or a Monday or Saturday. Doesn't matter what day the snow falls in, sometimes we do have to call out for overtime in order to address those issues.
And I haven't been a part of that type of management to know if there's been a problem getting people to come in or not?
No, I had, I had people calling me Friday to ask if they should be coming in for roads. And there was a couple that said, we need to, I need to get out on that road so I can open up this road here, say clean up for the health department and areas like that. So it's, it hasn't been an issue from, since I've been there. I don't know in the past if it was or not. I was told by the guys, they generally know when they have to come in to move snow in the winter time, when there's snowfall like that, after it stopped, they come out and they do it. And they went, we'll let Michael know or Bob. They come out and they do it, and they went, we'll let Michael know, or Bob. I told them if they have, they felt they needed to be out there to plow the road, or open the roadway up, just to call me, let me know, so that way I'm aware that they were there.
Yeah, that's what's good, I think.
Cause I had two come in Friday, cause one was concerned about the scratch from Barnard to Beverly, that everyone wanted to clean up the area.
The thing is, is some guys come in and take care of Barnard, and Beverly, they know they comes in, takes care of Silver and Westfall, then half the counties convicted that. Well, our roads didn't get cleaned, but they did in Beverly.
Yeah.
Well, you're gonna have to be consistent, have everybody come in for every district and do that.
Well, we had different snowfalls in different areas.
Well, that's true.
That's true.
Like West, you.
You have to give one inch of Westfall.
Four inches and we got six inches plus of this.
You know, Westfall had like one.
But as an employer, how do, if they're not contracted, which means, if you work on a contract, you have to get the work done no matter what it takes.
Yeah.
But if you're an employee, you put in your hours, so if they're not necessarily contracted, you can't force them to come in.
No.
To work, so how, just how do you, what do, what do you put in place as a mechanism to guarantee that, I mean, I guess you just have to go do it then.
Yeah.
It's kind of what it boils down to, right?
I did that, so it was three Fridays ago now, I got a call with a concern on a roadway, on Jaguar material being left on there. So I came in on a Friday and called another employee into hopping a truck, so we can move material off the roadway that had been left, so it didn't stay there all weekend, as a hazard for the people. That was Friday afternoon after I had gone home. Or, went out at three o'clock, I believe, in the afternoon, I just got home, got a call, there was me, there were concerns about that, so I came back, got in the loader. My, my minimum is fifty hours a week, but that's the minimum, I've never hit just fifty hours, it's always more, because that's what my job entails.
I think we had a question or comment or?
What, so like, when you're doing the ten hour days, grader go out, what time does he get back in?
So the graders, they go out, they're off, and like, on Mondays is different because we have a meeting with all the outside departments. So, on ten hour days, when we're starting at six-thirty, everyone is supposed to be at the office at seven. Including the outline shop guys, the guys that are in Lincoln, they're checking out the machinery, checking the oils and things like that, so after the meeting's done, they can go out and start on the routes. For the rest of the week, after our meeting, six forty-five, they're moving out the door, checking their machinery out. Equipment has headlights, and they start getting in position, start moving.
So you're driving graders in the dark? You're grading the road in the dark?
Not grading the road in the dark, but we can get into location to get the suns up by seven.
And what time does it shut off?
The graders are coming in about four forty-five, four forty, to shut down, cool down, and do a shut off.
Cause I know we have a guy that goes by with a tractor and a, and a feed wagon, and it's usually seven, but it's still dark.
Yeah.
And it's not gonna get lighter until the middle of December.
Yeah. Well, that's why all of our equipment is headlights and beacons, they can get into position, because if they, where you park your grader at. You're not always having to blade right next to, right after you get on the, right in that same area, you're gonna have to deadhead to the location of the road you're at. So that just comes down with planning the roads that they need to hit for the day, to where they can be most efficient, where they would be starting furthest away. Cause it'll be the brightest end when they're able to put their blade down, and finishing close to the, where they tie up at. And that just comes down to the efficiency of machinery and using machine to its best.
Well, I know this guy with the tractor and the feed wagon and all that, he also has lights and a beacon, but if you come up behind him, you don't know until you're there.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's a safety deal is the issue.
The grader looks like a Christmas tree when you drive it to the door.
Not necess, but not, but that doesn't make any difference. You can have a call, if you're moving small by in the dark and you got all these beacons and lights on, people don't slow down. They come right up behind you and then it's like, oh my gosh, there is something ahead of me, and it's like.
I know, we buried a couple of them and did that, and that cures itself.
So you got, you got a preference for one of them?
My preference is one of the bottom three options, the four day work week. And it's up to the commission to decide if they want us to be, I talked with the employees, they're all right with holidays paid at eight hours regardless, like the private sector does. And they will either use two hours of leave time to get to their forty, or we may work a couple eleven hour shifts in that point, to in order to get them to their forty. Or just being paid for thirty-eight hours that week, if that's the case. But, I feel we should be consistent with how our employee handbook is.
Well, I got a few phone calls from some employees, and I, I think they're. There's a twofold problem here, we want maximum output for our dollar, but we also wanna keep our employees happy. We want the people that are here, that are doing a good job to feel rewarded, and I think it always goes both ways. Sometimes, I believe that some of our employees don't understand the benefits package, as far as what that actually equals, when you. Put it out on paper as far as dollars per hour, you're not just making fifteen dollars per hour.
No.
You're, you're making five to ten dollars more per hour in your benefits package, cause we're paying that, plus we're paying our portion of employment tax. I mean, there are so many other expenses that we're actually putting into that particular employee, which they may not pay attention to. You know, I, I wanna make sure that there's enticement for the job, but that also comes with an understanding that you don't just get. A raise because, you know, I mean, we did a cross-the-board rate, yearly raise, and I know people say, well, it's not the two percent or the three percent. Well, we're not a money-making profitable organization where you do percentages like that, this is government, and some of the perks that come with this job are the time off and. And you, your guaranteed holidays and things like that, so.
What's that got to do with before?
I'm not opposed to the four days, is what I'm saying, but if we can't look at it. From the administrative point and the departmental point of saying this is a perk of the job, you know, because you hear a lot of, well, we don't make enough money and we want four days. And, and we want that, those are some of the things that I hear.
Well, one complaint is that other county employees gotta work eight, five days a week, eight hour shift.
I know.
And they'll say that ain't fair to us, blah blah blah, cause you get three hours off every week.
And then the highway department will call in and say, well, we have to work in the heat, the rain, the cold, the snow.
Every job.
I, I know.
Well, most of the time it's overtime when they're doing that, so.
If you come in on a Fri- Saturday to, cause it's snowing, you're gonna get overtime.
Maybe if you go back to your employees and say, you know what, when it snows on Tuesday, we're sending y'all home, and y'all will know that you're gonna work on Friday. Would they be okay with that?
Yeah, you know, that may be a conversation we need to have.
Or rain, or rain a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, because, do we want to pay Monday through Thursday no matter what, regardless of the productivity? When, I mean, if you have ten graders, let's say we get a rain everywhere, you have ten employees who cannot do their job that day. And I know there are other things for them to do, is there, are there eight hours worth, or if there's two, if it's that much rain, they're not gonna grade it that day or the next, so. Do we send them home and expect them to work on Friday? That's gonna damper a lot of people's plans to get a three day week job.
Yes.
That they can have two jobs at the same time, cause we've dealt with the same thing, well, not these guys, but I dealt with the same thing with EMS.
Yeah.
I talked about why we're paying full rate and overtime for sleep time, but they didn't wanna change anything because they all have second jobs. So, you end up with this, you know, I mean, there's definitely a struggle there as far as what you're gonna be able to accomplish.
Yeah, there's pros and cons to each way.
One thing they need to understand is, this job is their primary job, this takes precedence over whatever their second job is, and they need to understand that. If we have to have them, they've got to come. And their second job is gonna have to take second place, they have to take leave from it, whatever they need to do. This is their full-time employment, this is where they're getting a lot of benefits, and this is where they have to have their allegiance and loyalty.
Well, and if they have a trip planned, like you have three days off, you can, you know, plan a short trip, can't see it for a weekend or something. And put this blizzard on Friday night, you maybe have to cancel that trip, cause you gotta go grade Saturday, something like that.
If it's a blizzard, you might not be able to make it there anymore.
Well.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying, for example, they may have to show up.
If there's gonna be the four days a week, it may need to be a stipulation that you call the shots, and when there's a day that it's not gonna be productive. We're not gonna just pay to have them in-house, then give them the Friday off too. I mean, that's, we're losing productivity at that point. You know, if, if they're willing to say, hey, you can send us home on days that we're, we're trapped.
Yeah, because a lot of you guys' work is based on weather, weather is a big part of, cause if it's raining, snowing, you can't do a lot of that.
If it's too, if it's too wet, we can't do anything, if it's too dry, we can't do anything.
A lot of times, that's right, so a lot of your weather.
But I guess what we're saying is, okay, so you have a Wednesday night rainfall.
Yeah.
Thursday's your last day of work for the week, instead of having them come in, they should probably have to wait and then come in on the weekend, honestly. Because if you can't grade it on Thursday or Friday, cause it's still too wet, then they get the, the remainder of their hours on Saturday before the next, cause otherwise, what we're doing is. We're paying them on a rain day, and then we're paying them overtime to come in and fix it on Saturday.
Yes.
So that doesn't help us in our budget, is what I'm getting at. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but if you require that, I don't know, if you pay a lot of employees either, then they'll say that's too screwed up of the schedule, you know.
And if we're on five days a week, if we have rain the same way. If it rained on a Thursday and a Friday, and we rained out those two days. That's sixteen hours instead of one day, or ten hours, when they have to come in Saturday, then Saturday, and Sunday, then.
What you guys did earlier years where, uh, they would work in the summer, you're ten, ten hour days, and then without time change, go back to eight, right? And then when time change started in spring, go back to ten, and did that seem to, I don't know.
And I'm not opposed to that way either, I just, I know there was some concern with. Some employees were concerned that, they were, they were, they had called me and asked me if they could give up this Friday's vacation, so that way they could go back to four days a week in the summertime. Cause they, I don't know who they heard it from or who they had talked to, but someone had told them that they were never gonna get a four day work week ever again.
No, that's not true.
And that's why they were, they were willing to give up a day of vacation this week in order.
The concern is, and there's some, the concern is that in the middle of January, when it's dark till nine in, in the morning, and gets dark. Till that four o'clock in the afternoon, that, working ten hour shifts, you're gonna work three, four hours in the dark, and what are you gonna do in the dark? That's the issue, I think, more than anything.
Yeah.
Well, I think that, I think you guys send out a different message, because no offense, Randy, it wasn't too long ago that you told my little hair. Well, I don't know why you need to work five days a week, period.
What do you mean?
Or work four days a week, I don't know why you shouldn't work five days a week all year long, I mean, you said it, that's, that's why it's, that's why the employees feel like it's contradictory.
I've said several times.
I, I, cause I'm trying, I'm just trying to do what's best, I think, with county, and you know, that's why I'm asking them, and I change, maybe change my opinion or mind here based on that.
But I've also tried, you couldn't do Monday through Thursday and Tuesday through Friday to make sure someone's always there.
Because our staffing it.
They don't have enough staff to handle, handle Tuesday.
On a, on a project.
Person rides in a grader, not two, is what I'm saying.
I know, but like for projects, we're working on.
So it does apply to them?
We have, okay, maybe I have my bridge crew Tuesday through Friday, and everyone else Monday through Thursday, cause I have members on my bridge crew that can. Move plow equipment, drive trucks. It's an option I can talk with them about.
I mean, I was even thinking, if you really, if you have two, we kinda have these routes where it's two blade operators kinda work together sometimes. If they need to be together, they have Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday together, you know, or they switch stuff around, if they know they have to start on Monday.
Yeah, we'd go with three, that would give us three productive days where we could work on a project with our trucks.
Crossing over.
If we did that crossover that way versus four productive days if they were together.
Well, and let's say you have a person that's on, on a Friday, because his shift's Tuesday through Friday, then if his partner route has an issue. He responds, because he's there on Friday, but that person's not, you know, cause you have the ten blade operators, you have. Five sets of two, they could alternate and have the crossover, I, those are some of the things that we had talked about when this was brought up with the last administration. What could be done to ensure that when someone calls the phone, which now you have office administrator there.
And voicemail too.
Okay, well, so you're already taking care of some of those issues that we were bringing up as problems before, would that come?
We have voicemail on, on Fridays, and so is, okay.
Let's, what do you wanna instruct him to do?
As far as the forty hour week?
Five days or four days.
As far, yeah, as far as scheduling.
I've always liked the forty hours, and five and four days, four, ten hour days. And you could adjust it as you need to, if you need a Tuesday through Friday bridge crew, that's up to you.
Okay.
You got the job to do, but I think the four, ten hour days is much more efficient. And we'd have to redo the handbook to.
Well, and you're gonna have to put in the handbook that he can move those days, and he can shut the day off and send them home.
Put in handbook right there.
I, I personally like that stipulation, because I feel like that's only fair. I, I have gotten a lot of, and, and this is, you have to remember, this is all from past experience, and I think we're headed in a really positive direction, I'm not trying to. Damper the mood, but when you have people complaining about three coffee breaks, parties a day, where people from outlying shops even.
And they'll come in for that.
And I'm just saying.
It hasn't been there since I've been there.
But, okay, so you get a rain day, and what do people do? You're gonna have people asking that question, and it's hard. You're being scrutinized by the public who has eyes everywhere at all times.
Yeah.
So, it's gonna happen. I think just. Let him decide what he wants as far as the schedule.
We told all the department heads the same thing, if you set your own hours.
Okay.
And so.
Who told them that?
We haven't said that.
You have not said that, no, you have not. They've set their own hours, they set everybody else's hours.
Yeah, we do this, eight hours a day.
We went to the time clock system, they set everybody's depart, all department hours.
I'm gonna have to go look, cause that's where we said that in a meeting one day.
No, it's the elected officials can do their own thing, so.
I understand that.
So, so the sheriff department chooses twelve hour shifts, we have not changed anything, well, we haven't changed anything about the EMS. We went ahead and let them do twenty-four hour shifts, and then the new director put in forty-eight hour shifts.
They're special because they're, you know, they have a different requirement.
But we did set office hours for the courthouse, and the health department, and the landfill, and.
Highway department, which is, we remain back to.
Well, what did we set for their hours, though? Because they've been doing four hours.
Set, we were hours in the summer hours, pretty sure, I can open up the minutes. Just because you say something on your own does not mean you're a commit, it's a decision of the commissioners, and that's something you guys need to remember here. Is, it's when you say it here, that it makes a difference, when there's actually a motion, that makes a difference.
Absolutely.
The, the, the bottom three options are with four day weeks, with how the commission has to handle vacation, depending on the book.
Right.
So, I included for the next three years, I can go further in advance if you'd like, that was just going through him, to give us a guy. Show you guys where it could be for each one, and the difference in hours it would take for holiday pay.
Well, I don't have a problem with doing the ten hour holiday pay if they're on ten hour days, but I would like to see.
Yeah.
Some scheduling by you that shows that we're gonna cover from one end of the week to the next. Whether that means the grader men in their pairs do Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday, or, or you're gonna have people in the shop on Friday. So your shop person doesn't necessarily get, you know, however, that's gonna, cause you're not getting the Friday.
On the four day, on the four day week, it's been a help, cause that way Lance can come in, fix equipment. When there's no other equipment running to break, so I've had him come in a couple of Fridays.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, you're gonna have to make those determinations, cause right now, you, you're there on Fridays and you have office help on Fridays.
Yes.
So the phones are being answered on Fridays.
Yep.
And then.
If there's concerns, I go out, so I was in the loader to clean up the bag.
You're gonna have to make that determination, is there another position that you want always available on Fridays? Is that a reason to have Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday?
Overtime?
No, overtime, no, I'm talking about Monday through Thursday and Tuesday through Friday, which, maybe you get Mondays off, maybe I get Fridays off. But we're responsible for the same job, so that when you're not there, I'm not there, that's who takes care of it.
Think you're gonna make it too complicated with all that crazy scheduling.
No, other counties do that, that's where I got the idea, other counties do Monday, Thursday, Tuesday.
If you have, like duplicate for roles, I mean, we did it when we got rid of a night shift at, at APEC, we did that until we had lost the force down to.
If you have employees, cover every position, every job, every job.
I gave the example of grader operators, maybe it doesn't apply to the bridge.
Yeah, like bridge crew you don't, and then truck drivers and, uh, you know, you don't have enough truck drivers for two shifts.
No, so we would have the truck drivers there for, on a Monday, where we wouldn't be able to work on a project, because we'd only have one grader operator on it. From that region, unless we pull on from our area, and then that person's area is falling further behind, it's not in that region.
That's what I'm saying about getting complicated, when you split this up, it's gonna create these scenarios like this.
So then what do you want, just shut down every Friday?
That they've been doing, I don't know, I don't, I agree, I like it, some people work on Fridays also, but when you do the ten hour thing. That's what you're gonna get, and then if you split it up, then you're gonna get the situations, you don't have enough people like truck drivers to cover one on, enough on Monday, and then enough on Friday. That's where the problem.
They're not gonna be hauling five days a week, no matter what you do.
Well, you don't know what their schedule is, that's the trouble.
Yeah, on some of the bigger projects, we've been hauling and rocking and grid rolling for the entire week.
I'm not against it, but they're like this.
Who's working on Fridays?
No, no, just the, in the four day week, that's what we've been doing, so four days, if we split that up, I know, if we split that, this screws up, we'd only have three days where we'd have enough people. Out of that four or five, the full five day week where we could work on a project, so we would go from either four days to work on a project. Or five days to work on a project with five people, but with more lost time, if we split Monday, Thursday group, Tuesday, Friday group. We'd only have three days in the work week where we could work on a project.
Yeah.
We would lose one day, one, we'd lose ten hours of project work each week. Or, big problem.
Because of employees.
Yeah, we'd be short.
On Monday and Friday, yeah.
Okay, the motion was to establish the summer regular hours of the highway department at six thirty AM to five PM for the twenty nineteen summer schedule. That's what the motion was.
That's summer schedule, which was.
Summer schedule.
Which was before, it was like at the time change.
It was at the end of September.
Right, okay.
Which has nothing to do with the time change, the time change used to change soon. Which has nothing to do with the time change. Time change used to change soon.
The old days.
Well, I, that was me. I said that by accident, cause I felt like it was changing with the time change. That's how close in time I can estimate. By the month, with it, give or take a month.
I'd like to think, have you think of something else, cause I'm gonna come around and talk to you. With new equipment, new techniques, how can you improve your service, uh, do more with less people? A new grader obviously ought to work better than an old grader. Does that save you time and money?
Efficiency on graders hasn't changed all that much in the last fifteen years.
Do you anticipate it ever coming out? Do they have John Deere, Cat and these people have new stuff coming out? For example, lasers on the, on the blade to put the crown on the road and that kinda stuff.
It's already in there.
It, it hasn't, it, there's levels on that, so you can put that in.
Okay, I'm, I'm, if I may interrupt, just in the name of time, wanna start please with whatever you have to present? Sorry.
Another thing when he's done then.
Okay.
Okay. Do you wanna talk about sixty five since we went out?
Yes, please.
Okay, so, uh, OS sixty five, um, located out west of Sylvan Grove.
Yes.
Um, this morning, uh, Brendan brought up, he was asking about the rating on that, why it's three tons and stuff.
Yes.
So we opened up the bridge file. Um, there's actually, um, two approach spans on each side of that truss. So it's actually a five span structure. Um, each of those approach spans is, are timber stringers. Um, I think they're two by twelves on two foot spacing. Um, those actually govern that three ton load rating.
Okay.
Um, so it's not governed by the truss.
Stringer, does it go from end to end? Is that what that means?
Yeah, so abutment to pier, pier to pier.
Okay.
Um, so it's kinda parallel with the roadway.
Oh, you're saying five, five from this end to that end, it's five intersections or five?
Yeah, five spans.
Sections, okay.
Yep, yep. So there's, uh, so four of those are approach spans, which are, um, timber stringers. Um, those are what govern the load rating and it's at three tons, so that's why it's posted three tons.
Okay.
Um, so then, then we were talking, okay, if we go in there and we put new beams and new deckings, um, to get that three tons up. Um, we're wanting to try to figure out what that truss is rated at.
Uh huh.
Um, so typically, I mean, I haven't looked at it yet. I emailed some stuff to our load rating guy, um, Terrence. But, uh, I was wanting to see what that truss is loaded at. Typically, you see about three to ten tons is what the trusses are load rate at. Um, which again, we can load rate it and figure out what it is. So, um, that, you know, would be our critical, if we were to go put new beams in and get those approach spans up. Um, so I think Brendan was asking about replacing the deck, if that would get it over legal. Um, I'd like to see what that truss is rated at. So, um.
Okay, how soon can we get that then?
How soon? Um, I'll do my best. How about that?
Is it emergency or what?
No, no, I've been asking about this bridge for three years because I have a lot of people that would like to use it and still probably do, but technically shouldn't. And at the load rating that it's at, you can't even take an ambulance across it, which is a concern. I mean, and it's a very big bridge. The only other option is to go up and around to eighteen, but there's already a bridge shut down just to the south of there, so. If you're going south, now you're going up and around eighteen, all the way down two thirty two, down, all the way around and back up and it. I mean, there's a lot of C hooks to do if you're trying to get into any of those fields. The other thing is there's a landowner that potentially has some gravel that we may want to get to there eventually and is not going to be. Willing to have us do that unless they can actually travel to get to their field through there, you know, so. It has a benefit to the county to look at that bridge. It's been discussed in the past and I personally think, and I'm no engineer, but those pillars don't look like they're deteriorated much.
Just abutment one has a little crack.
Yeah, there's an abutment.
And I think they're fixable as opposed to.
They're actually really good shape for being.
And they're amazing stone. Why would we sit on this any longer, you know, I think.
It's the truss part in the mid, so right now the, the wooden approaches, those are three ton rated. So that's why it's a three ton crossing. What Tanner's trying to say is if we fix those with steel, so those approaches can hold maximum limit. The bridges, those truss bridges were designed for three to ten ton loads across them.
If the truss is six tons, then we're all gonna gain three tons.
By replacing the abutments.
Yeah, so we're wanting to figure out what.
But it was reduced, so at one time it was approved for much more than that.
It was six tons.
Total?
Yes.
It's what it was previously.
Ever?
That's what it was posted.
We went back to all the years of doing the bridge inspections. It was four, then it went to six and then it went down, back down to four.
There is a fact.
The bridge file?
I mean, the bridge, yeah, but what streets?
Kiowa.
Kiowa and Twentia.
Remember where?
Go past the.
Twentia?
Yes.
Go past the last intersection.
Big old eighteen west of Sylvan.
Oh, okay.
Exactly.
All right, I just.
You can still cross it and it goes right into Russell County.
Yep.
But, okay, I, so it's my misunderstanding that it was just a decking issue. You're saying the trusses themselves.
Yes, the stringers and the approach span, the timber stringers are what govern.
Stringer, okay.
Did you, uh, you expected this earlier along with all these other bridges?
And that's what we're looking at. Yeah.
Have you had it as a priority somewhere in there that's need to fix?
No, I've been asking it for, to be a priority.
Yeah, well.
Because it's been reduced to an amount where you can't take hay across it, you can't take feed, you can't take crop, you can not even get a tractor.
Yeah, the lowest you can post something is three tons.
Anything lower and it's closed. So, and what he was trying to say is that if we replace those approaches, those timber approaches, but that steel truss in the center can only load rate for six tons. We don't gain much by spending all of that money to fix the approach to leave that truss in place.
So what do you propose then?
We didn't, we have to see the loading.
Yeah, we're gonna look at the loading, loading of the truss.
They just load rated, they, when they load rated the bridge, they went by the lowest rating, which was the wooden approaches. We didn't find a split one for just the truss.
They're gonna have a sucker for the truss.
Any idea of expense, what would it cost to fix this?
So you're saying if the truss gets a higher enough high load rating, then we could just replace the stringers.
It could be worthwhile replacing the approach.
If the truss comes back at legal loads.
Okay, so let's follow up on that. Okay, now I understand exactly, sorry.
The truss comes back at, it's over, you can run anything you want over it.
Then we can look at what it would cost to just re.
Oh, let's put in, yeah, put some steel beams in and redeck it.
And you know where you are on that, so could you just follow up with him and?
Yep.
Good, thank you. For, thank you for looking at that. I do appreciate that.
Yeah, and, yeah, I, I, I took pictures and stuff of it and I sent it to our load rating guy this morning. Um, yes, we'll see how quick we can get something.
What's that number again?
It's OS sixty five, so OS sixty five.
Okay.
Do you know where, um, Sean's live?
Yeah.
It's just west of there.
Uh. Yeah, yeah, I, I know where they are.
The room kinda like off legs around. Yeah.
The country's, well, yeah, oh, what's it saying?
On the other side is like Kenny Maitler and Fair Kings and, yeah.
And there's, I got with Eagle and got their quote along with Wilson's.
Okay.
Wilson's, their monthly cost is higher than Eagle's, but it includes any IT and troubleshooting, problem with it.
And Eagles didn't.
Eagles, you have to pay additional fee for that.
Okay.
Which, based on the cut amounts, Wilson would be the better option.
Okay.
In my opinion.
So go ahead and sign with them, right? Did anyone object?
Wilson?
Yeah.
Yes. And that was what I've been asked to go with before.
Did you have any more luck on getting your fuel tank, uh?
Wilson included that with their quote, they'll install our services for that.
Okay. No, it's fine.
Yeah, and then asked me to look at, two last things, gravel pits, so this is the taxes from twenty eighteen. And then on the back are two of our gravel sheets. One of them I have highlighted in yellow, what I would propose to change to it. The one with the little red dock is the original. So in there, it talks about, the red one, the original, it says the hundred dollar annual payment for this. The one in yellow, I propose an an- annual advanced royalty of three hundred dollars, which will be a hundred and fifty cubic yards. The annual advanced royalty means we're paying for a hundred and fifty yards whether we take it or not.
Before we take it.
Yes, so the first hundred and fifty yards after that would be free. In addition, the original agreement doesn't say payment on a monthly timetable. It just says one payment annually. So I, just as, it has to go through the county attorney and everything, but that's what I would propose.
Oh, so just means we didn't have to pay anyone until the end of the year?
Correct, according to the contract. So that's, when I brought that up with Mr. Maitler when I started. That we would want, we would wanna re, yeah, we would possibly wanna rework this.
It's on anniversary date.
That, yeah, that's the original. That one is.
Well, anniversary date is yearly, right?
That's how you've changed the contracts, the counties changed the contracts to the yearly.
So someone may have started in the middle of summer, then that, the anniversary date may be back on that.
They started, they start May, they start March.
A year after they signed in July, they may have signed in July to July and some may not be, not from January.
They're in March.
Normally, normally you gotta change the lease in, in February.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
They, they're all on February.
But he's saying, yeah, we signed him on March thirty first, I think, but he's saying, we didn't have to pay anyone for any removed gravel.
Until, yes. So that, the updated one would have that stipulation and then looking at the total amount of tax increase for having it as a gravel pit. The hundred and fifty annual advanced royalty, the three hundred dollar amount would cover any change in taxes and then it would be on the onus of my department. To get out there and take at least a hundred and fifty yards. And if we have to go out there and take a hundred and fifty yards, we'll be more apt to start using that material so we can get out of the. It gives my department an incentive to get in to the crack pit, use up the pit and close it and get it back to landowner. Whereas now, we just give them a hundred dollars whether we take anything or not, so why would we ever wanna close it?
Yeah.
If we would have to pay more, it would make us use it more.
And we're basically paying for material that we're going to get, but then they have it in hand.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna read the correction.
Are we currently getting gravel out of all of this?
That was just what I found on, we, had found. Some of those pits are closed now, like the block pit, family ventures are closed and then the bolted pit.
Bolted, yeah.
It will be closed out. We're finishing up.
Okay, I'm gonna read the correction. Um, the proposed change is to our county gravel removal purchase agreement, number five. The entire paragraph reads buyer agrees to pay seller two dollars per cubic yard for all gravel removed from the property as well as a one hundred dollar payment per year. Payment shall be made on the date of this agreement and annually thereafter on each anniversary date. If the price to be paid by buyer increases for a cubic yard of gravel, the buyer shall send a written notice to seller by certified mail. Such increase shall be paid on all gravel removed from the property after receipt of said certified mail. Okay, I'm reading this as that one hundred dollar payment per year is to be paid on the anniversary date. I think that's just what that means.
That was, there was nowhere in there where it said how often they would be paid.
On the removal of the gravel, yeah. Okay, so this is the new, uh, section five.
Yeah, so I include that in.
Buyer agrees, pay seller two dollars per cubic yard for all gravel removed from the property on a monthly basis. In addition, an advanced royalty rate of three hundred dollars upon signing of this document. We need to change that. It's not a full sentence.
Yeah, it was, yeah.
This advanced royalty rate shall be made on the date of this agreement and annually thereafter on each anniversary date. If the price to be paid by buyer increases for a cubic yard, the buyer shall send a written notice to seller by certified mail and such, such increase. Shall be paid on all gravel removed from the property after receipt of said certified mail, okay.
Might have gotten rid of stuff when I tried highlighting things in Florida, no?
That's right, I'm just gonna give you a few, yeah.
It was a complete sentence.
In addition, comma, an advanced royalty rate of three hundred dollars.
It, it'd be something the county attorney should look at before we go forward with it, cause I believe they made this document. Just, that's in the private sector, that's generally, instead of the lump fee, you do advanced royalty rates. It's like a lump fee, but it forces the onus on me to get in there and use their materials so I can get their land back to them faster.
Would this be advanced or danced?
I don't think it matters out here in the country. County attorney will consider it.
Yeah.
Oh, don't even do it there. Let's just do it ourselves. Save some time here.
And we have until March for these, but that, that was reading through the agreements from what I, what I've done before was similar to that. Cause then it, it's, it shows that we will pay, most landlords are expecting that monthly basis check. This is, it's, we're in the contract that way now. It covers the increased tax costs for where all of our pits are at, for where it's commercially zoned ground, cause the pit is there. And the last thing I had was employee staff that would be executive session and then I'll leave you alone.
I think it is just advanced.
You want a motion on that change?
I do, to change section five as proposed by the highway department.
I make a motion to approve section five with editorial amendments as proposed with highway department, subject to, uh, review by the county attorney for legality.
I'll second that.
You need that whole thing over here.
No, we need to review that a little more or we're not.
It's just this change.
I have to change, yeah, it must have gotten rid of it, cause it was a full, complete, yeah.
I just marked it. It needed a comma and the words will be paid, that's all.
Yeah, when I was trying to highlight it in the application, it froze on me and then it sat for a minute and then it came back up, so I just printed it off there and. Closed it out, so I'm guessing when I tried to highlight something, it, I must have overwrote something, like I highlighted it and then hit the escape key, trying to get out completely.
Any questions? Those in favor? Would I?
All right.
No.
All right, perfect. Thank you for changing that. Did you have more, Tanner?
Yes, um, the tech point job.
Yes.
I've got a, grassed up plans put together, um, and we about got our bid docs finalized. There's some questions, I guess I had for you on when we wanna bid this and all that stuff.
Okay.
Um, so, run through this. Um, so. First part of our, uh, bid docs is invite or request for bids. Um, those, this is what we plan to send some contractors. Uh, I know Don sent me a couple of contractors to send to, um, some people that were interested in the project, uh, so on and so forth.
How many did you have on your list?
Oh, see, we've, we did one down in Barton County, so I think there's three or four there and then Don, you've sent me a couple. Um, so we're thinking maybe five to six.
Okay, do you have a list of those?
Uh, it's back at the office.
Okay, I mean, cause we're, I mean, are we prepared to send that out soon?
Um, we're getting there.
Okay.
Um, so the request for bids, so, uh, uh, we'll need to advertise for twenty one days, is what we're planning on doing.
Okay.
So we were wanting to put in when bids will be accepted till and when they'll be opened. Um, so I was thinking maybe we start advertising first of January, open up the end of January. Does that work for you guys or what were you guys thinking? Um, cause the paper, we'll have to put it in the paper and the paper.
It's weekly, five Friday before.
Okay, and then it, you have to send it Friday and then it goes out on Monday?
Oh, Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Their official publication date, I think, is Thursday.
Are you thinking just the, the Lincoln Sentinel?
Uh, yeah.
Or are you talking about like the?
We just the local.
That'd make timing, cause you can't start tech point till the middle of March, at the earliest.
Yeah, it gives them time to.
Yeah.
Um, and what are you thinking about the budget?
Let's see.
I mean, obviously.
One second, let's.
Kind of the cost of price.
I don't have any costs, no.
How many bridges were that again?
There are four of them.
Four.
Yeah, one.
Cluster.
Right.
Kind of Denmark, not Denmark, but Ash Grove.
Right, yeah, between Denmark and Ash Grove.
Like Denmark and Ash Grove there, yeah.
Yeah.
So fit. See after the first, so Wednesday, so one, two, three. So we could open up, open them up on the twenty seventh. And just have it for a commission meeting. Okay. So that worked for you, um, the open bids on January twenty seventh during the commission meeting day at like two o'clock.
That's the last Monday of the month then?
At like two o'clock in the afternoon?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And then we're assuming that the timetable, you're gonna have it proposed, it's this, this year project, the twenty twenty project?
Yeah, yeah, um, so, let's see, we got that taken care of, so open bids or they'll be accepted till two o'clock. Monday, January twenty seventh, we'll open them publicly, we'll read them aloud. Um, and then, let's see, next thing on here. Okay, so we usually put like an early start date and a late start date. Um, I had March as my early start date and then I had November as the late start date. Um, so we pretty much open it up between March twenty twenty to November twenty twenty and they can do the work anytime between those days.
Start date of November? I'm confused by that.
No, so an early start date is March, so they can't start until March.
Okay.
And then a late start date, so they gotta be done or we could, there's a completion date by November.
Yeah, that's what confused me. Okay, you said late start and I was thinking, is that another?
In November, yeah, you don't want to start in November, cause you're going in the winter.
So we could just say completion date.
Sure, yeah, sure. That gives them that timeframe, yeah.
And it kinda opens it up, so you know, if they've got other projects going, they can work ours in. Um, sometimes you get better bids. Until you, you know, if we say, we got, be done in a month and.
Well, we're hopeful. Four right there in one area should help a whole lot. That should get attracting, contracting.
Exactly.
Right.
Exactly.
Okay, okay. So, uh, early start date, um, March first. So, uh, early start date, um, March first, and then a completion date of November first.
Yeah.
Okay. And then we have some calendar completion days, which I can, um, I'll look back at some other projects to figure out, um, how many days we typically allot them. Um, I can put that in there too.
So you have no cost analysis?
I don't, I haven't put one together yet.
But you have the, the scope of the work figured, as far as...
Yeah.
So how do you do, do you have a program that has pricing definition?
So I've got, I've put together an estimated cost, um, so we'll have bid items, we plan on doing base bid as a FAS one-sixty, and that's along the major collector, and then each of the other structures will be add alternate. So, uh, add alternate one will probably, bridge twenty-five, number two will be eighty-nine, and then bridge eighty-six will probably be add alternate number three. And then I usually break those out in my cost estimate and put, uh, line items.
But when you call them add alternate, does that mean they can opt as the contractor to omit?
Yeah, so typically they bid, uh, the base bid and each alternate, and then, uh, the county, we can reject or accept any and all bids.
Okay.
So if they come back too high, we'll just, okay, we only take the base bid, the other three, we won't even accept those.
We can split it up then if we want to, but otherwise, we're looking at it as a package, and, but they may not bid the whole package because they may not add in every...
Possibly, it's their...
But that's the way that it's worded when you say add alternate, okay, gotcha.
Yep, yep, yep. Um, and then I usually, I'll put together, uh, we have some bid items as far as like, uh, removing, resetting stone, replacing stone, um, a line item for each of those, and then I, uh, I'll look back through some R files and put a price for each of those. And so we can say, okay, we estimate, you know, the base bid to be this much, and each of the alternates to each be this much. But I can, I can bring that to you, um, yeah, hopefully next month.
Okay, awesome.
So before we go up for bid for them.
Thank you.
Bid any incentives in it?
Like, if you get it done before this day.
Yeah.
I didn't have anything.
Job like this probably not worthwhile, is it?
They usually do, like, the tuck pointing by the square foot, and then they do, um, like your material costs, yeah.
Repointing by linear foot, uh, the stone repair by square foot, uh, stone replacement per each, and then stone remove and reset, um, would be each also. So those are the four items that we put together. And I called, I called the college in Deloitte, and they don't have the program anymore.
Okay.
I called them, yeah, and I called around Salina too. Um, my neighbor actually works for one of those colleges in the welding departments, I called him and asked him, but no, we don't have a masonry program.
Just not enough work on it.
Yeah. Right, right.
That's too bad.
But Deloitte College used to have it, but they got rid of it. Can we try to partner with you guys?
That A's does.
A's?
Well, yeah.
They do have an active brick program out there, I don't know if they do any stone or not.
I guess I didn't call, four A's?
Yeah, well...
Well, the boat tent, I think, there.
Maybe they're connected with Deloitte though. I would think if you called them, they would look at it.
I just know just my...
Yeah, just employee, employee issues for executive session stuff.
How long is that?
Uh, we have ten minutes, and it can be decided later date. Or five minutes.
What do you want to do, we're already a little behind, we have, we have to do, um, payroll, payroll before we leave, can you come back?
Yeah, what time do you want me back here? Four, four o'clock? Okay, and then...
That'd be okay.
Yeah, I can make that work, just to make sure, four-day work week for going forward.
I like it.
We, we started talking, then kind of got moved around.
Somebody make a motion. That's what you want, make a motion, stand by it.
Yeah, seems well, I have Gordon wanted it, you want it, Paul, you seem to want it, I'll think, I think it's good.
I move to let the highway department go to four ten-hour work week. With schedule adjusted by the department chief.
You have to include what we're choosing for reimbursement for holidays.
I like option four, holidays paid at eight hours regardless.
With, yeah, employee handbook, you have to amend this to that, I believe.
Because right now it says, well, we have a second for discussion, or...
Second.
Okay, so you're saying right now it says whenever the shift is...
That was my understanding of the employee handbook, that's why the sheriff's office is twelve. We were ten during the summertime, and the county off courthouse was eight hours. That's why we're all paid different amounts for the holidays.
We got to do that.
That's one of the proposals that we had had, was to just level the playing field.
Meaning everybody gets an eight-hour holiday pay, whatever their shift is?
Yeah. We still have to identify how they're gonna work, because our handbook also says a full-time employee is forty hours a week, and they must use their leave time if they are anything less than forty hours. So they would not be able to just get by with eight hours, they would have to use two hours of their leave time.
On holiday?
Yeah, on holiday, two hours leave time will make it up, but two hours of work time, I was mistaken on that, thank you.
Do we need an amendment in the motion to include?
Well, isn't that what you have?
You said number four.
That's option four as it is, right?
Okay, with the, okay. Any further discussion? All those, well, I would like to say there is the stipulation that you're going to, you're going to explain to them that if they get a second job, because they know that they have a three-day weekend every weekend.
Yeah, when there's, when we have projects and things like that, that we come first.
Okay, those in favor, vote aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I'll be back at four o'clock the other day.
Thank you. Tanner, did you have anything else?
I think that was it. A few other things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on with our agenda, we have Mr. Terry here in Lincoln Park Manor, okay?
We need a secret meeting here.
Yeah. Move that.
I just have a... I'll try to do it tomorrow. Yeah, I, yeah, I will pick. I'll try to get to it tomorrow, I just have a bunch of communication for my cases. Yeah. Okay.
You guys want the first one, yeah?
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. Okay, would you like to come up, please?
Hello?
Hello.
Uh, Dana Rice is our regional operations consultant, so...
Maybe a couple of them, I think two out of the three.
Yeah.
Could we do an executive session and go over some of the financial stuff?
Yeah.
Good.
You want to do it?
I missed the introduction, I was turning.
Dana Rice.
R-I-C-E.
Yes.
Okay, do you have a request for the executive session as far as attendees or topic, and a length of time?
Uh, I'd say forty-five minutes. Is that too long?
Um, if we're going to do that, would you mind if we just bump in this next person on the agenda, just...
Yeah, that's fine.
Since you're here, would you do that, is that, okay?
Store your seat, sorry.
Come on down then. Was that, was that amendment to the agenda, okay?
That's fine, that's fine.
I just figured instead of...
No, that's fine.
Okay. What may we address with you?
We are talking about bringing up the date from the, uh, silver-haired legislators.
Okay.
We met, and then also the eighteen county board. And from the silver-haired legislators, that the House will pass, as usual, reading material. And the House passed the bipartisan bill to reauthorize the Older Americans Act, which we're changing the name to the Dignity and Aging Act. Not we as Kansas, but nationally. So now it goes forward to the Senate. And it's on front and back. Read at your leisure. It is the same things that I talked about the last time that we passed, uh, when the silver-haired legislators met.
All of those sub-items are in that?
Mm-hmm.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Interesting.
It's sort of a national thing, you know, it's not...
What are they gonna call this again?
No real ones were invented in this process.
What are they gonna call this again?
It's, it's right here on that first line, Jim.
Oh, dignity and aging.
The dignity and aging act, people like how that sounded better, for some strange reason. Rather than the older American. And then on secondly, uh, there's our public goals, which is a draft, as you'll notice. Excuse me. And that's the Area Agency on Agings, uh, in people with disabilities and caregivers in a hundred and five counties of the state. And this is what we're showing, is our public policy goals as we move forward, twenty nineteen into the twenty twenty, it's front and back. And then on this third page, you will see a map that shows the areas that we cover. And again, uh, just to remind you, I'm on the north central Flint Hills, which is, we call it PS eight, and that's where Lincoln County is, with the eighteen county board. The one thing I'd point out to you is about, the one thing that we'd really like to get is more dental therapists in Kansas and services for seniors, dental care is really lacking in the state of Kansas.
Dental therapists?
Well, they're, yeah, I asked the same thing, because you need therapy when you go to test, no. Uh, it's, it's, it's the person that's going to, cannot give all the services as a, as a dentist. So there are, what they'll call, what they are calling, the dental community is calling dental therapists, and they can do cleanings and these other things. Right now, it's just one service that's for lower income or disabled is in Wichita. We'd like to see that expanded, and it's like a one-day or two-day deal. Uh, I think Lion County has one, uh, Emporia, and then that's about it. So, one of the things seniors need more of is dental care. And then, I felt like I should have been giving this out at the beginning of this when we were talking about, uh, the hospital, and that is the twenty-year population that Wichita State University has recently completed. And as you may have guessed, it's not good news for Lincoln County, our population is declining and will continue to decline. So, obviously, that means, um, things like property taxes will go up for individuals that are here remaining. So that's the first page, is just the whole study, all put together, of, of just those counties that I'm on the board of, the eighteen counties that we're looking at. So you can, at your leisure, go over and look at the different areas. The first gra, uh, graph is from zero to five infant preschool. Then there's six to twenty-four school to college, twenty-five to fifty-nine working age, and then the sixty-plus, uh, the silver-haired legislators are in, have, are working with Wichita State University and completing this. And what we're doing is, uh, going around and giving PowerPoint presentations to the different counties, different organizations, uh, different five oh one C threes that are...
These are the total numbers for all eighteen counties?
Mm-hmm, the first pages.
Yeah, mm-hmm.
Moving along into Lincoln County specifically, on second page, you're, you're going to see that our population from, in twenty years, from twenty nineteen to twenty thirty-nine is going down. Our population right now is three thousand seventy-two, down to two thousand six hundred and twenty-eight. And if you'll look to draw your attention in twenty years for the school and colleges ages six to twenty-four, that drops from seven sixty-three to six oh four. So there's gonna be declining enrollment. The working age of twenty-five to fifty-nine from one thousand ninety down to eight hundred and seventy-eight. Meanwhile, uh, the one thousand and forty-three sixty-plus seniors, uh, goes down, but not that much. I mean, it's going to sort of maintain and grow in many different county, count, in other counties. In Lincoln County, though, most of your age population, as it's been divided in this study, is decreasing in twenty years. The new seniors versus the old seniors, new seniors are aged sixty to sixty-nine in this study, and old seniors are seventy and above. And so I'm proud to say I'm an old senior bringing you this information. I think. So that's Lincoln County, and I thought, you know, well, what would you else want to know? You'd want to know what your counties surround you are comparatively. So the next page has Ellsworth County population, and this takes a long time to go over and get used to what all these graph colors mean. So it would take, it's gonna take each of you at your own rate to read and, and, uh, understand this. So Ellsworth is predicted in twenty years to be the county in the eighteen county area that I serve as the only county that grows in population.
The only one?
Why is that?
Uh, well, the statistics say that just, uh, for what the reasons are, we don't know what the exact reasons are, but the twenty-year projection of older people and younger people having in that equation.
Well, I saw that the overall population's going up, but, so you're saying that's only an increase in one out of the two?
Well, no, there's gonna be some increase like there is in Lincoln County, but the major town that is going to grow is going to be Ellsworth, in Ellsworth County.
Well, but the overall, the overall population has decreased for Lincoln County.
Yes. Look at, look at Ellsworth County, you have, in twenty nineteen, your count, population, it, it doesn't grow, doesn't seemingly grow, but about two hundred and some people.
But look at the preschool.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
That's a hundred and twenty people in itself, that's...
You know, like what you were talking about, what you were talking about earlier, about what kind of doctor you might have at a hospital, a generic, or a...
Geriatric.
Geriatric doctor might be well more served in Lincoln. One of those.
Those get together.
Right. For Lincoln County rather than a pediatrician, let's say.
Mitchell County.
Just saying.
Wow.
That goes crazy.
How are, yeah, how are they getting those numbers?
You're jumping ahead, Jim, as usual.
I don't feel speed either.
Okay, well, Mitchell County, and that's why I threw in these extra counties, so you can do a comparison against Lincoln County.
Look at the preschool in Mitchell County.
Yeah, why can, how can they predict half the babies would be born ten years from now than...
Or even twenty years from now.
I, I have no idea how Wichita State University use their statistics, but they do.
You know, we don't know what's gonna happen twenty years from now.
Well, but we know what has happened twenty years ago.
Yeah, but you can't predict twenty years from now, but...
But you can safely say, I mean, we've been on a steady decline, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Add an actual comparative percentage, year over year, whether it's...
I actually think a lot of the population in the big cities will be moving out here to just go out to the big cities.
Well, that's, that's what silver-haired legislators are thinking we need to do, but how do you grow them to come here? Is your question, you can't keep doing...
You can get someone to readjust their lifestyle.
You have to do something to make people want to come to your area.
It is for retirement.
And so you, you have to have something that draws them, industry, whatever that might be. And supposedly, I guess Ellsworth County has more industry to grow them here. And then I also threw in Ottawa, I also threw in Ottawa County. Well, it's not according to them, it's according to the whole state, and you're looking at the whole state. Western Kansas, as, as, like, seventy-two counties where I am at Smoky Hill Public Television, we are really declining. And the thought in that whole western area, at least where legislators, et cetera, is looking at, will counties have to combine to keep up their resources to serve?
It's inevitable.
A hu, can a hundred and five separate, um, entities survive in twenty years?
I talked to, uh, what county was that I just spoke with, and they have, their highway department budget is half of ours, the money, and they have the same amount of roads, mileage, now, they don't have as many bridges, but they, I mean... Now, they don't have as many bridges, but they, I mean, and they have half the people, so...
So as you know, no matter what decision you make, it is gonna affect you in the long run. Then there's, I threw in three maps so that you can have an idea of where Lincoln County is as compared to... The first one being the 70-plus population category from 2019 to 2039. You know, we'll have 138% and compare that to the other county. And this is just the 18 counties that we are involved in with the silver-haired legislators serving that area.
Interesting.
The whole, you can get Wichita, it's on WSU, Wichita State University. And I don't have a copy of the whole state, because it's a book. But I did get the copies of this. And there are PowerPoint presentations that we can give in future time when you've got time, if you wanna do that, which I thought might be good to have one as a, you know, down the road, of what kinds of questions you might want to have people who come here know are to serve. And the other one is a 60% percentage, age 60 and over, or the percentage for age 60 and 8%, of the total population. On the blue map, on the blue graph, in Lincoln, in 20 years from now, the population of people 60 and age older will be 36.2%. So you're, when you look at it, it's gonna be a third of young, a third, more than a third, of older people. And then, then there's all those other categories that are in that last third. So knowing those things is what kind of businesses you need to bring here, what kinds of services need to be offered.
Nursing home.
One thing's, exactly. Staff for that, for sure, training for that, for sure.
Hospitals and nursing homes.
Well, what kind of services do you offer for the majority population in 20 years?
No, I'll grab this slide.
Well, I don't know.
You'll be too old, can't see.
Well, then transportation becomes important.
Jerry will have a job in the foreseeable future.
You'll be one of these statistics.
What, do you remember the state growth overall?
That's the front page. Well, no, no, I don't.
The state itself, I just don't think I remember that.
I don't have that.
They probably have this accessible, don't you think?
The state only grows more rapidly in the east part of the state.
But it's still growing, or not?
It's growing at a very slow rate.
Okay.
Rural areas are being depleted, people are moving to the cities.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
So what can you do to bring them so that we all can survive? That's what I have to offer you today. The other only thing was the question about serving on the 18-board that was brought up. That, I received the letter from that in March two years ago, so really my term is gonna go towards March. But they wanted to have somebody be there now. And how it is, is every, it's not, it's the person writes to the commission that wants to be on the board, and the commission makes the decision. It's not through the Agency on Aging here in town. So when they sent you the letter...
The way that I read it was, the actual term length is, is the calendar year, January to January. But you came in after it started.
I understand, yeah.
I mean, I, I'm not...
I came in only be, I applied in November, like this is now, and they wrote the letter. But for some reason, I didn't hear anything back until March or April.
Yeah, oh, I do remember that.
Yeah. So they, so anyway, this, we met last Tuesday at Concordia. And there are several committees that I am on that I'll need to continue on if you want me to continue in that position. So I am telling you now, I would like to continue it. It's a six-year term, but every two years, and for reasons because people are older, sometimes those positions come open sooner. And then they are asked if they want to continue, if they say yes, then they are. And that's what that letter was that you received.
Well, I don't have a problem with that. I still think we need to put it out there, just so that we have awareness about what board positions are.
There, there is, yeah. It's always been in the past, though, it's just automatically been somebody's...
How soon do you need to get reappointed?
January.
It should be that I start in January and not in April.
So we don't do it today?
No, but somewhere there, I don't know if you contact them, or do you write them a letter? I don't know, how was it Dawn before?
Normally, I send them a letter once a month.
Well, they ask the person if you're in that position, if they want to continue, up to six years.
You talked about just listing all the open board positions. Were you gonna do that?
Yes.
Would you please be able to do that in the next few weeks? Okay.
This is, again, this is for a 18-county, not just within Lincoln County. So it is different on how you do that. Usually, the person applies to the commission, which I did in November of 2017. And then you took action on it in March. So to answer your question, Randy, sooner than that.
Sooner than January.
No. She needs, don't wait four months yet.
Yeah, I have to know so that I can be on those committees that meet in January.
Do it tonight.
It's up to you.
Would you like to take a personal bit of information, I don't know whether it's appropriate or not? I've talked to Julie Bower-Walter, you may have heard of her?
Yes.
And she likes the job that she's been doing, would like to see her accepted again.
And I have no problem with that. But I wanna stick to my guns, that we need to at least be showing people what positions are open. It doesn't mean that anyone...
And the Council on Aging here, to defend them, they have advertised it, and it's in the paper of the positions that are open there. But they have always opened them when someone has declined to continue, not just because it's the end of the term.
Yeah, but if it was meant to be a six-year term, it would be a six-year term, is what I'm saying. You do have an expiration, a two-year thing, so that means...
Because we had like three people who only served two years at the last meeting, and so they were given a certificate. They were saying, oh, if you're only, do you need a certificate? And I'm like, I don't have a clue.
Well, I don't think we have people knocking down the door. I'm just saying, I do think there needs to be awareness of what the board's positions are.
And it's a monthly deal, where you do go someplace every month. And then every two months, you meet as a whole group. And that, that's a different thing than the silver-haired legislator.
Are there 18 people on the board, one from each county?
There's two for each county. And you've always just put the other person, Glenn Stegman, in without opening that position.
Well, I don't even remember doing an appointment.
Yeah, you did, you, you got a letter, and it's about a year ago, it's in your minutes.
We'll think about it, Cindy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
We better move on here.
You still have to go do dining hall inspections?
Yes, I do, I did three this year. But I can't do my own county, because that's a conflict of interest.
You should see some good dining halls out there.
Thank you.
That's why I'm gaining weight, which is, oops.
I'll do it.
Too much eye.
Thanks.
We're ready for you now, Mr. Grace.
Okay, we have a request for a 45-minute executive session. And do you have a request for attendance? We have the options.
Yeah, Jennifer, sure.
Did...
Want to include her in?
Jennifer, or Jennifer, okay. And you, and just nice.
Dana.
Dana?
Dana.
Okay.
Okay, and you would like to discuss financial data from...
Is there a negotiation?
Well, I don't really think it's negotiations per se, because we're talking about data relating to financial affairs or trade secrets of corporations, partnerships, trusts, and individual proprietorships. Does that sound...
That's fine, walk pick one, it's all right.
And you, and you would like the commission and the county attorney and Ms. Rice, Mrs. Rice? Ms., I should say. So I move to recess into executive session for 45 minutes. For the purpose of discussing Lincoln Park Manor financial information pursuant to KSA 7543192B. And that would be number four, to discuss data relating to financial affairs or trade secrets of corporations, partnerships, trusts, and individual proprietorships with the Board of County Commissioners, Mr. John Grace, Ms. Dana Rice, and County Attorney Jennifer O'Hare, to reconvene in the commission room in 45 minutes.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion, any questions? Those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, and I'll be right back, right after.
Good to meet you.
By myself.
I wonder who the hell thought up this older Americans Act being changed to Dignity and Aging Act? There's no doubt dignity and aging, I would just say.
Kind of just hanging on.
I tell you what, we're just waiting on the undertaker.
Better than the alternative, huh?
That could be. I wouldn't wanna poke fun, but I would read the top line there.
Yeah.
Aggravates me knowing people don't proofread this stuff. She's got north-central Flint Hills Area Agency on Jing, she's capital A on it. There's a couple more in here, just...
Not everybody's perfect.
I don't, since I've gotten old, I sink down in water, inches of when I try to walk on water.
I normally always try to have somebody else proof, or I read it aloud, because you can look over the same thing 20 times and remember.
Reading aloud is almost a universal way to solve problems.
I'll make you sit here, and you can get caught looking crazy all the time in the video.
Okay, we have had some discussion about going into the future as far as what's happening with the nursing home. For the year 2019, we had $120,000 budgeted. We currently have a balance remaining of approximately $40,000. For the year 2020, we had signed $100,000 even, I believe, to that particular line item for the nursing home. The current lease, which is held with, is it, is it under Grace Team? Is that the lease we see?
No, it's Lincoln Park Manor.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. I'm sorry, you're right. The current lease with what is still Lincoln Park Manor, being managed by Grace Team, is set to expire at the end of May. I wanna say it's the 23rd. I thought so, okay. We have come to an agreement that we are going to seek bids for sale of the building through an RFP, request for proposal. And our county attorney has agreed to put that together within the next 60 days, so that we have a complete RFP. That means anyone that would like to bid on it can then see what is for sale.
With this stipulation, stays in the RFP.
Yes, we're going to have a clause in the RFP that it will be not, it won't be able to be sold to transfer into a different type of real estate, you know? You're not gonna be able to buy it and turn it to... The county sees that as the best way to ensure that it is maintained as a nursing home. That way, anyone that's interested in purchasing it will run it as a nursing home. That's about, we, we were gonna put a 60-day?
Yeah, she's gonna have it run in 60 days.
Okay, and then we'll have a response time. Did you have a question?
So then when you sell it, then you won't have to put any more money in?
Well, part of the RFP, we talked about having a three-year maintenance agreement with the RFP. That way, anyone that bids on it knows that they're getting a three-year maintenance agreement with the county. That number has not been determined. Obviously, that number will be determined yearly, because you have to do that in the budget process. The commission has the power to do that, except if they sign some sort of agreement where they pre-designate a dollar amount. But the, the lease agreement would basically be tied to the line item budget from the general fund. Does that make sense?
So it would be a lease rather than sale?
No, it'd be a maintenance agreement. I said, I'm sorry, I re-said the word lease, I didn't mean to. It, the RFP will incorporate a maintenance agreement for three years, that then the county, after three years, would have zero obligation...
And involvement.
To the building, and to the...
No more involvement.
Right. It's a way to phase out the county's involvement, but provide some security for continued operation, given the condition of the building, the age, some of the things that need done in the near future. It's a way to devote tax dollars to that, but then have a limit, a cap, and an end to it. What else can we discuss? Yeah, I didn't make a motion out of that, though, we need to have concisant motions for Dawn. We talked about some things that need to be purchased in the near future at the county's expense that are physical assets tied to the building, such as the call system, security cameras, and...
Wander guard and bids.
What's wander, oh, the, the...
Security system.
Does that allow you to take more acute patients, like dementia, Alzheimer's?
Yeah, dementia residents that have wandering, yeah.
What violent patients, can you take them, or do they have to go to the...
The wander guard isn't gonna fix that, so that's gonna just... Well, it depends on what type of behaviors they have. I mean, we can certainly try to train up our staff to handle certain cases, but not everything.
Do we have a motion there?
No, I didn't make a motion. I'm just trying to explain, yeah, so that if there are any questions, they're more precise when we do have motions.
Shall I make the motions?
Last point of conversation. We have deemed that the approximate amount of back rent is somewhere around $60,000. We have not been receiving census numbers until just this past month. We did receive a census and one month's rent, or approximately what was equal to one month's rent. So I think that...
I can get you a census for 2018 and 2019.
That'd be great.
2019.
Uh-huh, 18 and up to current.
Yeah.
So those were the topics that need to be, you know, closed and open session.
Review in six months' lead.
Oh, yes. We have a request to, to do an extension on the lease for six months. That way, it allows for a transition period when we get responses to the RFP. It would be a process if someone does want to purchase it. The tenant, of course, has the available, the option to bid for the RFP. And any bidders then who could potentially win have to...
Negotiate with...
Well, yeah, well, it basically guarantees the tenant a certain stay under the new landlord. Does that make sense?
Lease temporarily.
Right, right.
Now, for the motion.
Yes, do you...
I move we extend the lease between the county and Lincoln Park Manor as is through 22 November 2020. Attached to that lease is Appendix A, which we've already seen before.
So, and adopt Appendix A?
And Appendix A will be adopted as part of the lease agreement.
Okay, I'll second that. So we're doing a lease extension for six months, and we are adopting the Appendix A. This was presented at a prior meeting, but it basically outlines the obligations of the tenant and the landlord. Any more discussion?
You said six months, isn't it? Just...
Yeah, yeah, discussion.
He said six months, but then you also said about November?
22 November.
2020.
His lease runs out in 2020.
He said 22, November 22nd, 2020. His lease is up at the end of May.
Okay.
Actually, 23 May is the lease is up.
Yeah, so for us to put the RFP together and get all the paperwork done by the end of May, it kind of puts a time crunch on something transpiring. So that gives an additional six months to let all of the finances and the new tenant, or, I'm sorry, the old tenant and potentially a new owner work things out. Is that clear? Is that clear?
So now, are you guaranteed to get rent then, till then?
The lease states that the rent is to be paid according to the census.
Every month, so.
Yeah.
It's already in the lease, so when he pays it, how he pays it, that's a separate thing.
I mean, we plan.
So was that in the last lease?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. Any further questions? Those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I have another motion, Madam Chairman. I move we ask the county attorney to prepare and issue an RFP, request for bids, to consider the following things for the county's building in Lincoln Park Manor. And if you give the details, please, county attorney, so she can write them in the thing.
Are they the same as what Ms. Moore already said?
Yes, yeah.
But for your official motion.
You have to state it. I have the RFP will be prepared within 60 days to be submitted.
That's me talking, by the way.
That potential businesses will have 30 days to respond to said RFP as to the sale of the building known as Lincoln Park Manor.
And attached to the RFP will be Appendix A, so the new tenant will understand the maintenance agreement. And also, the county will enter into a maintenance agreement, a funded maintenance agreement, period, no identification.
With the purchaser for three years.
With the purchaser, yes, for three years.
And the RFP will include a clause that the sale of the building and the building will only be used as a nursing home.
Notice how my voice changed a couple times.
Would you please restate the motion?
I'm going to.
You with the, the written version. Sorry, it's probably six sentences long.
It's not even anywhere close because he interrupted her and she interrupted him, and you guys interrupted.
We're not putting it on you, Dawn. Yeah, it's better to have it written for yourself.
Well, something like that.
That's why I did the whole explanation.
I love cheaters.
You're cheating.
Yes, the RFP will include a three-year maintenance agreement. Is there any dollar amount?
Yeah.
All right, anybody want to bid on that? I haven't yet, we have to come back to that.
Okay.
Sell the building. Or use as a nursing home. In the future, it'd be helpful if you worked your motion out.
I don't know. I take full credit for failure here. I have written them out before.
Yeah, that's what I have. Okay. So are you ready?
I'm ready.
The James Gableman moved to ask county attorney to prepare an RFP to consider the following things. The RFP will be prepared within 60 days to be submitted, I'm assuming to the Board of Commissioners, that the potential businesses will have 30 days to respond, building known as Lincoln Park Manor. I need to clean that up, but. To include Appendix A that will be attached, the extension of the lease agreement to include a three-year maintenance agreement with a clause of the sale of the building will only be used as a nursing home. Seconded by who?
Not yet, we were just trying to clean that up. I'll have a second. You can't second during motion.
Why does, or, I don't, what's the Appendix A got to do with the sale of this? That's, that's.
That's the maintenance agreement that we talked about. That's the items that will be covered in the maintenance agreement.
Okay, I didn't know why if we needed that in this motion for selling.
I thought Appendix A was originally equipment that we owned.
It's not.
No, it's this thing here.
It's, it's a, it has responsibilities.
Okay.
It's something that we never did, that was supposed to be in the lease.
I thought the Appendix A originally for the lease agreement was, was what we owned, was the property.
They agreed to go.
So maybe this should be Appendix B?
Appendix B.
Well, I don't think Appendix A, I looked at the original Appendix A of the lease, and it didn't have anything in it.
Just put the attached.
It didn't have anything in it, that's the problem.
Yeah.
Because they never provided us with the property that they owned versus what we owned.
And also the responsibility.
Just put a maintenance agreement in accord, in accordance with the attached pages.
You have it.
I have those somewhere.
Well, whatever, I should have asked, we should have approved it.
Can you just attach that and extend?
I can't attach nothing. Appendix A is, is with respect to both the facility and the equipment and fixtures owned by the, by the county is listed in Exhibit A.
Yeah, Exhibit A is the, the property item list, so Appendix A is the maintenance.
It was a ma, yeah, I want to, it stated.
According to what you just read, Exhibit A.
I think it's one and the same, but that's okay.
Oh.
Well, I just remember.
Do you want to fill this appendix? Can I be filled Appendix A? I mean, bottom line is, I need to put together a written extension, which includes all this information and reaffirms our lease.
Are you reading the lease now?
Yeah.
Oh, so it only has the words Exhibit A?
Yes. And it's equipment and fixtures owned by the county.
Read that.
Read what you just read. Says the county shall obtain and maintain appropriate policies of insurance providing permanent fire, casualty, and extended coverage protection with respect to both the facility and the equipment and fixtures owned by the county as listed in Exhibit A.
Okay.
I just don't want any confusion.
Let's call it B.
Appendix B?
Yes.
Or Exhibit.
Exhibit.
Or. Let's just go with Exhibit B.
Well, you tell us what's appropriate.
Let's just go with Exhibit B.
Okay.
It's fine. I'll do an extension. I think we need to do a written extension, incorporating everything, reaffirming it, and setting this for, so we all know what we're doing going forward.
Sure.
So. Okay, so I'm modifying the motion to be Exhibit B?
Yes.
I just want to make sure we understand what we're talking about.
That's right.
Right.
The problem is, we still don't have Exhibit A, which is the list of owned property.
So do you want me to reread?
But this does kind of address that, the list.
Yeah, reread it.
Move to extend the lease between the county and Lincoln Park Manor as is, as is through November 22nd, 2020. Attached to the lease will be Exhibit B. Oh, sorry, wrong motion. James Gableman moved to approve the county attorney, or, to complete an RFP to consider the following things. Prepare within 60 days to be submitted, that the potential business will have 30 days to respond. Selling the building known as Lincoln Park Manor to include Exhibit B that will be attached to the extension of the lease agreement to include a three-year maintenance agreement with a clause that the sale of the building will only be used as a nursing home, seconded by.
I'll second.
Sorry, sorry, I'm. That's not your fault.
What?
It's been moved and seconded, it's just like a six-mile-long motion. Is there any further discussion? Okay, those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I need to take shorthand. My mom used to do shorthand.
Now I move.
If I talk slow on the next one, can I make a motion?
I'm moving.
You're going to do it.
Can I fix one thing, though? Is it okay if I fix the extension of the lease agreement to include Exhibit B?
Yeah.
Yes, the language, okay.
I, when I started to read it, didn't realize I had gone back. Okay, sorry, moved.
I move to reserve the remainder of the 2019 budget line item for Lincoln Park Manor to be absorbed by the county, which is approximately $40,000 to the general fund, to recover a portion of the $60,000 approximate debt in rent from Lincoln Park Manor, remaining unpaid and owed to the county.
Whatever, if we have any bills due between now and the end of the year.
We'll have to pay them in January.
Um, you do remember there's a $6,000 bill for a mixer in your AV currently?
Did we already leave the doors?
The $40,000.
But, but it'd be about 35 if we take out that, because we did the math without the doors, it was about 40, so then if we took out the mixer, it's about 35.
Okay.
Then.
Well, and the doors were actually approved last year, so we probably could take them out, that special improvement fund that we put in.
Then leave my motion as is, and we'll just, it still gives a cushion.
It's counting it.
We counted the doors as a, as an expense.
Seconded by.
I'll second.
Under discussion, I would like to point out that we have been approached on purchasing things such as approximately $13,000 for a call system, security cameras inside and outside, a wander guard system for door, for the doors so that they can do, as we said earlier, maybe take more acute care patients, and maybe some beds. The total amount we came to, just guessing in a ballpark, is about $53,000. We have allocated $100,000 for the 2020 budget. My motion does not include any unpaid rent that potentially could be incurred in the future. It doesn't cover $20,000 of back owed rent that is still due from the current lease, and I see it as a way to recover rent, which I would point out, the same lease that requires the county to put expenses out to cover the physical needs of the building also requires the tenant to pay on a rent monthly basis based on census. So both of those financial items are in the same agreement.
And we would say that the county violated the lease agreement because the county did not keep the building in shape and according to the contract.
Please give an example.
We had several days last year where there was no air conditioning in certain areas of the building.
Was that due to the renovation project?
Yes, uh-huh.
The renovation project that you agreed to?
But it was up to the county on handling all the renovations, so.
No, we were not managing the actual project. We were paying for the project.
I don't really want to argue.
Well, how many days were you?
Okay.
No, let's clarify.
I'll make a list of all the things, and I'll be glad to provide it to you.
Let's clarify, how many days you were without?
Yeah, I'll get that for you, yeah.
So do you think it's equal to $20,000 that you, that I'm still not asking for in my motion?
I think the county did not fulfill their obligation in the agreement in a number of ways.
So then why didn't you refuse or hold it?
We asked.
Do you have an escrow? Do you have that exact dollar amount in escrow?
We asked for new beds, we didn't get those. Those are for the proper care of elders.
Does the lease not state that the county and the tenant shall agree upon expenditures?
And we came to the county requesting those beds.
And we refused it.
And you refused it.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
The lease says that we have the right to come to an agreement on the expenses.
That's a good example, so.
I would like to know, do you have the amount that you choose to not pay in rent held in escrow?
I don't, listen, I don't really want to argue with you, Alexis.
Do you have it held in escrow?
We just have a disagreement, so.
But it's a landlord's right to know if the tenant is holding payment in escrow.
Let's take the vote.
Call for a vote?
Yeah.
He calls for a vote.
I get to discuss too.
Okay.
I don't disagree with the back rent, but I think it would be a better use of our money if we take care of these four things and then do the back rent out of next year.
Well, we're going to have availability in our budget in January. 60% of $100,000 is more than enough to cover those.
Jim.
Yeah.
The call system is critical, okay? We, it's broken.
Well, that's, that's why I'm thinking we need to fix some of this stuff now.
Okay, so it's, so it's $14,000?
For the call, 13 or so.
Well, I'm rounding up.
The first three, we probably ought to fix, and that's 33,000. The bids, I'm not excited about, but the first three are security issues.
Well, like I said, January is coming, and we will have 60% budgetary authority to expend out of our $100,000 line item.
The call system is critical. It needs to be repaired right now.
So then are you willing to take the $14,000 out of the 40 and withhold the?
That's what I'm saying, yes, that's what I would do. I think it's a better use of our money than put the, the rent thing in next year's, in the 2020.
Well, we can still withhold the 28, 26,000.
I understand that, but I think we ought to fix the call system right away, out of our 40,000, 35, whatever it is. Delay your late rent payment until next year, is what I'm saying.
Well, it would just, we would just change the number. Are you willing to make a motion for the, the same as what I've made and reduce the $40,000 amount to, to subtract the $13,500 system?
I would make an amendment to your motion to that effect.
Okay, I amend, I move, let's vote on the amendment. I, I move to amend my motion. Let me make sure I don't get anything wrong. Ms. Rice, you said you had a bid for approximately $13,500?
Yeah, I can give you the exact number if you need it.
Yeah, as long as we have something.
We're talking outstanding time, Brittany.
Oh, yeah. I just let my wife know I'm not too late. She was going to, doctors went, she had that thing combined, so.
The bid says $13,142.71.
I amend my motion to replace $40,000 with $26,800.
I'll second that motion.
Voting on the amendment only?
On the amendment.
Those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Now to the original motion, which states that we're going to retain the remainder of the budget, which is $26,800, and apply it to the debt and rent owed to the county from Lincoln Park Manor. I will call for the vote. Those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed?
Aye.
One opposed, motion carries. Okay, further points of business on this subject?
So since you reduced that, are you approving to pay the $13,142.71?
Yes.
And what is that specifically for?
For the call system replacement in its entirety, correct?
Yes, yes. So we don't need a motion for that, we can just go ahead and.
You can purchase it.
Proceed with the work and, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, yes.
Who is the vendor, so?
Alliance.
Alliance? Who we currently have?
Yes. Sorry, just wanted to make sure.
You had another item for Lincoln Park Manor, are they done?
Did we make a motion to extend the lease?
Yes, we did that, and it passed unanimously, unanimously, and I would like to restate that if you would please give us our monthly census and the back census information so that we can do our numbers.
Yep.
Okay.
How do you want to handle the bids and the security systems?
We're going to do that next year.
January's budget.
Slap the government out of money. The only critical thing was the call system, right? The rest of them wait 60 days if they had to.
The wander guard is, I'm concerned about that, too. I know there's concerns about residents eloping.
So if we, if we have a resident who gets outside, even for one minute, okay, the state will come in and find you.
I understand that.
It's, it's a very strict, so, most facilities have a security system.
Well, we are in year three of your lease, so it's obviously an issue that we can take care of, and we could have taken care of. But as far as what's going to be done between now and the end of the year, maybe you should pay for it.
Well, I think it's critical to the care of the residents and the safety of the residents.
Then I, you should definitely pay for it.
No, you should pay for it, it's your responsibility.
Actually, if you were that concerned, you could have paid for it all along, so.
Well, we can do it next year.
Yeah, we only got a month.
Yeah.
We have to tap into three years.
We're in the world here.
Yeah.
Let's tell your nurses to watch out patients, they don't run outside.
Most ever farms right here got hobbles that you use to put on cows. Anyway, that takes care of Lincoln Park Manor?
Yes, we will be proceeding with the RFP arrangements. Do we need to have a special meeting with you to kind of discuss that?
Is there any way I can have five minutes in executive session, Attorney Clyde Prophits with you today? I know Brandon.
I can wait.
Okay, five minutes, that's all.
He's on mountain standard time anyway.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thanks for the negotiations. I hope we all walk away feeling like we lost something. That's how it's supposed to happen.
John, Dana, take care.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
It's all right, I'm paid by the day, not the hour. Well, I'm paid by the year.
What is the subject matter, please?
Nursing home? Let's just close that.
Okay.
Don't, don't shut it up.
All open.
I move to recess into executive session for ten minutes, is that okay with you?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
I just really like it.
Five is never enough, and we always end up sending it for the purpose of discussing Lincoln Park Manor negotiations, landlord negotiations pursuant to KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen two B and number, um...
Oh, keep it open.
Number two.
I'm going out, sorry.
Okay.
Number two consultation with an attorney for the public body, um, with the commissioners, do you want Donna here? And the county, county attorney and the county clerk.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Sixteen thirty, sixteen forty.
Okay, I have, sorry.
Is the camera off?
Thank you.
Four thirty-one.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Keep on, I'm gonna go get some food.
Are you gonna keep that?
Is that okay?
Yes, it is.
Do you want me to make a comment?
Nope.
He wants an executive session, so the topic is...
Employees and the interviews.
Oh, the interviews?
Interviews and the employee situation.
Uh, you have to be a little more specific, just like the nature of the situation.
Uh, disciplinary action.
Okay. Okay, so which do you want to do first?
Um, we can do the disciplinary.
Okay, and how many minutes? Ten?
Fifteen, I'm sorry.
Fifteen. You need HR?
Yes, Tom.
And... Anybody have any questions about that?
Yeah.
Okay, is this the last item on our agenda?
Uh, we still, yes, we still need to approve the accounts payable.
Accounts payable.
Did you, did you hand those out?
I have, I, I had them and then I took them back because...
Okay, well, we'll do that at the end, if that's all right. We'll, and we'll do fifteen on this, and then how many more on the next one?
Five minutes at that.
Okay.
It'll be short, so it's a second one.
I, uh, move to recess into executive session for fifteen minutes to discuss employee disciplinary actions pursuant to KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen two B. Please add Highway Department under that. Number one, personnel matters of non-elected personnel. Two, reconvene in the commission room with the commission, the acting HR, and the director of the Highway Department.
I'll second.
It's been moved.
Ten minutes, did you say?
I said fifteen.
Fifteen, yep.
Moved and seconded for fifteen minutes. Those in favor, vote aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
You seconded it, James, right?
I did, yes. You made that very clear. That's unfortunate.
Okay, let's move on to the next executive session, and we'll have some time to think about retouching on that subject, but there's nothing to provide to the public about that. So I move to recess into executive session. You have something that you're just gonna recommend, and you don't need any more time than five minutes.
No, no.
Move to recess into executive session for five minutes for the purpose of reviewing Highway Department interview results. Pursuant to KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen two B. Number one, personnel matters of non-elected personnel. Uh, to, with the commission and the director of the Highway Department and the HR to reconvene in the commission room.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Sorry. Useable chairs.
This part of the exercise.
Then, yeah, those...
I said I was gaining weight, but this is freaking out.
They started twerking the taco off, but you had it ready.
There we go.
Those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Sorry, I need to look up. One of the comments...
We didn't, it's lucky you didn't.
One of the comments that was made throughout all my conversations this past week with Highway Department employees was the pay rate of new hires coming in and what about us existing? And, um, there was one employee that said that he'd stepped up and helped during, um, the chip sealing projects, or I shouldn't say chip sealing, because that was scrapped, but they ended up doing the patching. And he was paid the previous year extra money for doing so, and he was not this year, and he wondered why, and if I could help them understand why. And I said, I don't know if it was just overlooked, but, um, I would ask.
Well, was Michael Hare still here when we did that project?
No, I think that was in, with yes and no.
He, he was leaving, so that's why. I mean, if, if you have a certain administration doing something, and then they're not there the next time it happens, it might not be done the same way, so I don't think the commission caught that.
Brendan is even here.
No, I didn't tell him the patching before I was hired in.
Yeah, it was probably when we didn't have anyone, actually, I think.
And so he, you know, and I told him, I said, I'll ask it, I'll ask about it. I said, you have a right to be kind of bothered by it. You took the project by its horns, and I'll just ask. I said, I don't, I don't know, I don't remember specifically them coming and asking, or Liz coming and asking, or if that was even the time after Liz, I can't even remember when they chip sealed, but...
Oh, yeah, I think Liz wasn't there.
So...
Yeah. I think we need to start looking at that pay structure.
We gotta do the pay scale like it told us down the horse talk.
Exactly, because the value of the position is equal to a dollar amount, not necessarily a tenure or, you know, a, a certain amount of annual raises, in other words. I think that's what we have to look at, because like you're saying, you can be here for twenty years and you started at seven fifty an hour. So now you're only up to twelve, and everyone else is starting at twelve, because that's the value of attracting someone to the job market at this time. But we really need to look at our budget and see, and, you know, as you get through next year and see where the numbers turn over, there may be some flexibility there that wasn't there prior, becau, just because of simple, um, purchasing decisions. And that's not an easy task, but it's on your shoulders.
And Brendan, this employee didn't mean it in any disregard to you. He was just like, you know, he mentioned it, and I said, well, I'll say something.
Okay.
Doesn't hurt to ask.
That's also a timing thing, I mean, what do you do? Give retroactive pay for a week to the person who charged that project, or...
I think it was probably more than a week, but...
Well, I'm just hypothetically throwing that out there.
They did their patching. I know they spent about sixty-three thousand dollars on materials alone, because that was how I was able to get the FIP filled out.
This year?
Yes, they normally spend a lot more.
Yeah.
Because we have a federal fund exchange, yes, we have a federal fund exchange with the state where they get, instead of the county receiving federal funds, the commission signs the agreement, and we get ninety cents on the dollar, but we can use it for chip sealing or other things like that, whereas the federal funds with other... No, no, I was able to, I found it two days before it was due, because it was in the stack of paperwork back in September when I started. I had no idea where the old ones were at, because there was no one there to show me and no keys for the cabinets. So I went through, called them, found out the information, was able to get into our systems and submit it, and it was like sixty-three thousand dollars, so we were eligible, and that's why we received that fifty-five or forty-nine thousand dollars back in October back.
Okay, well, thank you.
So that's, that, it, it wasn't very much. They bought a lot of materials, but they didn't spend much time on it.
Um, my question for the board, are we going to instruct him to bring in job descriptions? I think we did mention that last week, didn't we?
Next Monday.
Yeah, we had talked about commissioners bringing me and Gordon in here with our job description, so you go over where we are and the structure of the apartment, so that way we both can understand.
Especially now that you have a person in the office, I think that adds a different dynamic to how you start it, so...
I think this ought to be a topic for next Monday for a bit.
Okay.
Okay, and then, did we get a bill? Did you guys know we got a bill, I think, from Mr. Branda?
Uh, it's in payables, so they'll know when you guys review.
Okay.
And then, our excavator, they received it last week, they're fixing, repacking the two main cylinders, and they're, had an engine code come up, so they're fixing both of those before it'll be delivered.
That's good.
Should be here, yep, should be here, well, I haven't seen it other than the photos, it's in Kansas City. But main cylinders, those are repacked every four to five thousand hours anyways. This has three thousand hours, so the fact that we're packing it is not a concern, that's just an added benefit for us going forward, because it's, it's, it's an expense, it's not an unknown expense on them, it's a common expense, because they just wear, seals wear out over time. But they thought possibly tomorrow or once a, at the earliest, or they might wait until the holiday weekend is up and come the following week, when...
I hope they wait, because I'd like to be over there when they unload the night.
Well, we'll be unloading it in the north lot, we're not gonna unload it in town and tear up my parking lot. Preferably, I don't want tearing up the chip sealed parking lot, if we can avoid it. So I'm gonna have them unload it in the north lot where it's free from power lines and everything like that, so...
You take all the fun out of it.
I know, but I don't want to take out a power line while I'm taking all the fun out of it. Trying to do it safely for, for, um, more room and cleaner space to unload it up there.
Accounts payable.
Yes, and I have abatements. Sorry, I should have brought those.
More abatements?
Um, in the accounts payable, we had to modify, we didn't have the health insurance bill when we ran at noon, so I, you get the notebook, right?
Yeah, left it.
So I've added the health insurance bill, and then there's tax abatements.
Any issues on payroll?
No, besides...
Yeah, let's look at payroll first. Or no, I'm sorry, look, can we do the abatements first? I will just read them off here.
Oh, we got tax abatements again?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, tax abatements. Two thousand nineteen, number six through two thousand nineteen dash ten.
Can you spell NUI?
Uh, what?
Just wonder if they spell NUI. E-N-U-I. Boredom to the nth degree. No, they don't have to come here.
All right, um, a, a dollar amount of four hundred ninety-two dollars and ten cents, Alan J. Meyer for, uh, a motor vehicle sale, I suppose. Yeah, sold. And one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars and fifty cents for Richard Ansel put cropland to pasture when purchased, so I'm, I'm assuming it was taxed as cropland?
Yes.
Now it's pasture. Um, one thousand three hundred and one dollars even to Richard Ansel, cropland that was converted to pasture, but taxed as crop. One thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars from Richard Ansel, same thing, cropland to pasture. And...
Is that CRP going to grab that?
Yeah, three years worth.
CRP?
Yeah.
No, I don't know if it's CRP.
It just says cropland to pasture.
Yeah, cropland, CRP's considered cropland.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, it's a different, under, it's not like farm ground.
Yeah, there are like thirty, thirty different...
But I think with FSA, it's considered, you get payment for it, so.
Yeah.
Pasture, you don't. Probably come out of a contract, CRP would probably went back to grass, you probably just get pasture, that's probably the value.
Okay, and then thirty-five dollars and sixty-four cents, Joey and Schwint, um, what's his name? Uh, tagged a pickup in May, so...
Okay.
I move to approve all tax abatements. Uh, no, this is the accounts payable. Two thousand nineteen dash six through two thousand nineteen dash ten.
I shall second that. It's my turn.
Yeah, second, okay, you got it.
Those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, I will sign them. Oh, aye for affirmative, I don't think I voted.
Would you mind, when you get done signing, if I have a copy, or if I typed off your motion, make sure I got everything right?
Sure.
That you had wrote out? I think I got it, but I might have missed a word here and there. Do you want to borrow your motion?
This one that I...
Yeah.
Are we still in truth or consequences here?
Yes, what's up?
We're paying Bob Barker.
Sure. I love games. What are you looking at?
The accounts.
Repair the Mack tractor for twelve grand, what they tried for a winter. Really, would you tell, I never heard about that either. Repair the Mack tractor.
That's a truck.
Yeah, yeah, truck.
I don't know, yeah, I don't know why.
Twelve grand, I, yeah, that's quite a bit, unless like an overhaul or something. Maybe we did.
Auto transmission.
Yes, maybe this somebody did, but usually they tell us about something.
Yeah.
That's all.
Yeah, it's fairly big.
Well, yeah, I think over a couple thousand bucks.
How are things working out with your part-time help? I mean, is it relieving some, or is it not enough time, or?
It's not enough, it's just not enough.
That person doesn't have any more time to give?
No, which was kind of, you know, wild like that, because I thought we'd have somebody by now. I don't know what the answer is, but what's Katie Good getting paid for out of the, sure, I mean, out of the attorney's budget? County attorney, she's still coming up and helping with some of the filings and...
How's Liz working out?
I, I think okay, I think she's still trying to learn, and because they didn't have time together, there's so many things different from now.
Yeah, that's fine, I just wonder if Jennifer can...
I didn't know if it was additional services, or you're saying it's just the clerical help training or whatever?
Yes, and I think that she's had to do some of the filing. Everything is done electronically now, and, you know, when you do something for fifteen years, you can do really well at it, and...
Yeah.
But it's a little hard to teach.
Herbert Flidymoes, uh, basically, huh?
He apparently remembered.
Okay.
Why do they have so few?
And just charged?
Um, the Beverly Rule Fire brought the bill up, so...
Oh, so it comes out of their budget?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Where are those for few people in capers? You only have ten or twelve line items for capers.
Those are funds, so everybody, so like ten zero zero whatever is all the county general people, anybody that's getting paid out of county general, so those are just all the funds.
What's the negative of that?
I just saw they're six, seven...
Is that GPS rental that's that for the three-one-one?
Who's it to?
I have one.
Who's the company?
GPS Insight.
That's for the, that's what's in tracking in the motor grinders and the couple of trucks.
For three-one-one?
No.
GPS?
No, it's separate.
It's a GPS thing?
It runs on their equipment, so when they fire their equipment up, that's for today, because they don't have any time.
Oh, okay, okay.
Because he was off.
I see.
That's Bill Murray Bell Professional Services, twelve hundred bucks.
That's that PVC regulatory, um, filing that they do for us, so they send all the information.
Is that a yearly bill?
Yes, and when we...
Where do we pay that?
We pay it out of county general, but the PVC will pay for it when we meet in January, that's the one I told you guys about. Out of the PVC.
They're paying it.
No, it'll come out of the PVC fund. So when you guys meet, that's the one I told you that we got the bill for. And last year, we took it out of county general, then when you guys meet, otherwise I would have you issue, you'd have to have a PVC meeting, and I would issue the payment, so this is how we've done it. But they will do that for five years, that was one of the contracted things that we did when we did the refinancing.
Guess we're buying all of our fuel now from Home Oil, I guess, I mean, Lucas?
He said he, he...
Lucas, okay, I'm not against it.
He said he saw prices.
Well, and they're probably competitive, I'm not against that, that's all right. And Lovins, a Lincoln County citizen, even though I wished he had that business... And, Lovins, a Lincoln County citizen, even though I wished he had that business in Lincoln County.
Yeah, I think, um, someone was just telling me, was it, is it, uh, let's see, has bumped their sales tax up to like ten percent? Over there, like LaRae, or, I, I think one of those towns has a huge, and I think Lucas is up over eight percent.
So, uh, what Kenny, Branda's was fifty-five thousand, huh?
That's what we got a bill for now, I'm not sure if that.
If that's total, 'cause it was, well, it was a bid, the bid was eighty.
Eighty-two. I, I think that is the total, I'm pretty sure.
Well, that's good, if you save us thirty grand, huh? We gotta, we spent eight thousand.
Yeah, it'll cover that for sure.
But that's, that's good, we needed to do that, I guess. Doug did a good job of that.
Well, if you want the project to last.
Well, you want to seed it, or it's gonna wash off, so, you know how steep that is, that's gonna wash bad, erosion, but if you have a good grass base, it'll help. You know, that's why you do sear peeing water out of it.
Doug Levine said he'd applied, he could've bid on that grass.
That's what they gave you last week.
We approved it, because that's the other bid we got.
Well, we really didn't approve it, we just told them to go ahead and do what they wanted to, we should approve something that big.
Well, that's where we need to get our, I wanna get that purchasing policy.
Yeah, I was gonna bring that up, we need to prove something that big, 'cause that's, you know. And I realize highway departments can spend a lot of big money, but, so we can't approve every little thing.
Right, but you could have a cap that we at least need to approve.
Five grand or more.
We're buying a lot of Smith and Wesson's here.
Good.
Where, where are you, I was.
S and W.
Double checking.
What if they get me one?
I don't know, they are.
Maybe I get a sheriff's department guy?
I'd count.
I've got a field carrying license.
Seventeen hundred dollars, that'd buy you a pretty good twenty-two.
Wonder what that refuse is for, Lincoln County Highway Department, five thousand bucks, does that pay him? Oh, that's the, that's what we pay the highway department from the, the line trail, huh, for hauling it, duck, to the dump, fifty-seven hundred?
Well, I hope that's not just for hauling trash, is that what that is, Dawn?
No, 'cause they don't charge that much.
Later in mileage, is that one month?
I think, if I remember right, I would go pull the invoice, but, um, I think that I overheard. Caleb say where they couldn't find where they billed it in previous months.
So it's, it's more than.
Like a couple months.
How many months it is, but I'll go pull the invoice.
Well, it's nobody, you don't have to.
Do you wanna call?
It's okay. It's alright. Don, you don't need to.
It's okay, it's fine.
It's five thirty, my goodness.
Well, we been, we, we did start till eleven at Eaton, you know, that, we started late start, and we had a lot of business, had Grace and all that here.
Nothing jumps out at me.
Neither, a few things, but I think.
I'll tell you what, I, I think, at first I was opposed to doing a medical billing contract for the ambulance department, because I thought, why can't we in-house train? But I do think it's been very affordable.
Well, I just looked at here.
It was a good investment.
I just looked here, and they got, they got a hundred twenty-nine thousand dollars we billed this year.
That's awesome.
It is, it's in the deal. Uh, yeah, and I, we're doing that now with Ladonna's, uh, Salter, Sherry Salter's doing that right for us, she works for Ladonna.
She's doing that.
Billing, huh?
Well, she's doing the collections part of it, I think, yeah.
Well, who does the real billing?
Well, the billing itself is deleased, that's what I was, we paid them nine hundred and forty-five dollars this month.
But I noticed that on the budget.
How much we collected?
Well, yeah, they got a four hundred thousand dollar budget, we have a hundred twenty-nine thousand, and you know what?
It's good, it's good, yeah, much more efficient, I think, Donna was just saying, I think the leases ended up to be a very good investment.
I think so too.
Well, I noticed it, I just told Alexis, I noticed in the budget you gave us, uh, you know, may I say, billed a hundred twenty-nine thousand this year.
That they received.
Yeah, that's pretty good, huh?
Yeah, it, it's more than, it's more than what we budgeted, 'cause we only budgeted seventy-five, so.
Right, and they got a hundred twenty-nine, was that about normal in the past, many years ago, a hundred thousand a year or something?
Normally somewhere around a hundred.
That's good.
But, they're also billing every mile, so even if you're here in town, you're getting a base charge of at least a mile or two. Where we didn't do that, we, if it was in the city limits, we didn't, but. But they're recording the miles now on the run, so.
Uh-huh, well, good, well, we're getting something, and also, so in their budget, really, we, we get like four hundred thousand on our budget, really, they're paying back, giving us back a hundred twenty grand, so that's.
Yes, which, if you kinda look at it, basically, you're transferring it to buy future equipment.
Well, well, the future, we need, he said he needs a new truck, that one, that one ambulance is about, I said, well. But they only have like fifteen thousand in capital overlay, so, how do they do that, they pay for it over years?
Yes, so basically, we, at the end of the year, if we have enough money, we transfer it in, we haven't had enough money, so this year, what we'll have to do, because that's, if they're at a hundred and twenty-some thousand, and we only budgeted seventy-five, I can amend their budget by that dollar amount difference, and then we can end up transferring it. Okay, the landfill question was from six twenty to current, so I was right on that.
What is this payment to Jennifer O'Hare from her own budget?
I didn't know there was one, but. But, if there is anything that goes, that gets appealed, that goes to the public court, we have to pay, there's a statute that says that we pay them.
I just wanna know what the bill is, it's one, 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 two, one thousand one hundred and one.
How could you have five dollars and eight cents overtime pay?
A half an hour, I don't know, quarter of an hour, quarter of an hour, probably.
Let's all, this, highway department was fixed one, what we brought to.
Uh, yes, it's an appellate brief, and, so it's a. Court case.
I just wanted to know that it wasn't some sort of, um, contract or something, 'cause it didn't say what the, didn't say like mileage, or a fee for something.
Yeah, no, and we do have to pay too, like, um, she's had a couple of cases, that even when she files the brief, they end up going to actual court, and so, um, some of them is just doing the paperwork, some of it is actually going down the testifying to.
Well, I'm looking over, I just had that one question, Don, do you remember when the highway department, they fixed some trucks, that cost like twelve grand?
From who?
Highway department.
Uh, do you know the vendor?
Yeah, well.
Mac?
Yeah.
Mac, yeah, Mac. And I just, and that's, I'm not, you know, I just don't remember us having it.
Management, did we ever figure out what's going on with that vehicle, 'cause I see that you paid to have it cleaned out, and.
I talked to, who, I talked to Spear, and he said they were gonna take it like this, last week, this, next week coming up to an auction. So that's why, I, I went down there.
Well, I just know that, it, I see.
I didn't talk to him, I talked to his, what, secretary, but that's what, she called him and told me that.
Okay, Kenworth, fourteen thousand two ninety-five?
No.
No, that's the one we bought, that's the truck we bought.
This was twelve thousand nine hundred or something.
I'll find it again here.
Our general fund pays seventy-two dollars to Randan to have.
It was two.
Trash picked up?
It's coming out of M H C cameras.
But why do they pay it directly to Randan, or why would we pay it directly to Randan?
Because we're paying him to collect our trash.
Is that for the dumpster?
Yeah, and he's dumping the dumpster, and I think he dumps twice a week.
Well, I saw it somewhere.
Was it maybe sellers, I'm trying to think who.
How much was it exactly?
I can't remember, I'm looking.
I'll, I'll tell you what I'll do, I'll run up and get anything that's real close that I can.
Is this occupational performance place, the one that we decided to do the free screenings, so that's what it costs for one person, hundred and nine dollars?
And if you're mobile only doing safety sensitive people, what?
No, yeah, yeah, 'cause we wanted, we, we had them measured on the scaler, and then, what's, oh, postage, meter funds you bought?
Postage, so what we do with that is we buy it in milk, so they will only let you do two thousand at a time. And then, twice a year, we bill out to the departments to get the money back.
Okay, so they keep track of what they use on it?
Um, the meter does, so you put in an account number, and then, it's June twentieth and December twentieth, we pull those accounts, and then we bill the departments for them.
Okay, and then, what was another one I had wondering? Oh, was that? Was the register of deeds, was that a jury hotels, was that the K A C? Conference?
Jury hotels?
Yeah, it says it was billed out of registered deeds, but I didn't know if that was a three-day thing, or?
Uh, she did stay at the jury hotel, but I think their association pays for that, so it may be that we're getting a reimbursement.
That was Tammy, huh?
I mean, I saw her there, but I only saw.
I saw her, she won at T V, you see that?
No.
She won at, yeah. Yeah, and this, uh, rate roughly a hundred forty-eight thousand, we gonna get reimbursed by insurance?
Yes, so we have a hundred and six thousand dollars there right now, and, um. Or a hundred, hundred and some thousand, so, I contacted K Camp several times now, and I called him again today, and I haven't heard, but we wanted to go ahead and get it, and hopefully we can figure out, I think they owe us somewhere around forty-seven thousand.
But, they're not gonna pay the whole price, and?
They are.
Oh, well, that's what I thought, that's fine, I know we gotta pay it now, that's fine.
They won't pay the skylights, though.
I know, I know, that was, that's true, I know that, yeah, that's, they told me that on my.
Is that on one of the credit cards?
Here we go.
No, it's a, it's a, that's what I didn't, it wasn't on the credit card, it was on the, um.
I swear, I don't see.
Right here, Bruckner, Bruckner. Right at the second page, right at the very start, Bruckner Truck Sales, repair Mack Tractor Highway, twelve thousand ninety-nine dollars.
Okay.
I guess I would write match that.
Bruckner.
It's register of deeds, and Tammy okayed it, I swear.
Got, that's the one they ever gave him.
That means she's on their.
See, they gave that away at the show.
Secretary or treasurer, I think their association ends up paying for it, so I think we'll probably get reimbursed, but.
I, I just didn't know if that was like three days, or?
That is three days, hundred and seventy-nine dollars a night.
Wow, I, I guess I had to stay in the poor little, one whole night hotel.
I thought the jury place would have been.
You know, though, my place you put me in, was, my, the place you put me in is really good, I, I could not.
Ask Jim what happened to him.
Where was you staying?
Well, let's see, we're not sure.
Royal suite?
I went in the first day, and they said, well, your roommate, Michael O'Hare's already checked in. I said, timeout.
He was down there.
So they, they gave me my key to fourteen thirteen, it was really thirteen thirteen, but they don't admit it, so I spent the night, next morning, I come down, and, uh, my key didn't work, so I come down and say, how come the key didn't work, well, you checked out this morning. Well, I didn't. Said, well, you were in room eleven seventy-one, and you checked out, and I said, no, no, no. And I ended up having to describe my little brown bag that I bought in East Germany, with, uh, the handle duct taped on, to, and they sent security up there, and he had to, he went in and identified my bag. Oh, yeah, so I still ended up in thirteen thirteen. And then they didn't bill the county for the rooms anyway.
No, but we have charges on the rooms.
Not on mine.
From that hotel, 'cause no one else stayed there?
Oh, yes.
Should be charges on mine.
How did they get to do that?
Um, well, we've still gotta figure it out, but this is what I think happened, Michael O'Hare reserved a room under Lincoln County, which, when he would've reserved it, would've been Lincoln County's room, I called him, took his reservation, put James Gableman's name on it, gave him my email address, gave him our credit card information, gave them everything, this is what I don't understand. I got a welcome to whatever place, Michael O'Hare email, because I gave him my email address. So everything's in Michael O'Hare, thank you for checking out, would you like to rate our services, Michael O'Hare, but they charged the highway department credit card. For one night at least, there is a charge on the highway department credit card, which we don't know how to get, so I told Michael, I sent Michael an message and asked him to check Schwab Eaton, because he said that Schwab Eaton had called down and set up the room and everything, and had sent them their credit cards. So somewhere along the line, everything got screwed up.
I mean, it big time.
And, so I apologize, you should've had the room, and I, I may have told Michael, I'm sorry, but you reserved that room while you were a county employee, that should've been our rooms. Sorry, don't mean to mean, be mean about it, but.
Different one, yeah.
But nonetheless, yes, it got incredibly, but you had a room.
So where, what bank card is that on?
First bank card one, or high bank. And we didn't pay.
What's, what was ours on?
Yours was on bank card two.
Where did you stay on?
I stayed the red roof, in a pool, so.
Is that good?
It was fine.
I stayed the river, the river.
Water walk.
Water walk.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But it was, I, I just stayed the one right next to.
I'm sure.
I stayed the one on the other side.
Okay, I am, I was, if you get on the highway and went like three exits the other way.
No, we had a charge on the highway department.
But they had condo rooms, I had, I had kitchen and all that, oh, yeah, kitchen and refrigerator, and I had like a condo townhouse.
That's nice.
Yeah, it was cool.
What is that code on here, Don? I just kinda wanted to look.
First bank card.
Oh, under F, and it should be number two, I believe, yes, under F.
The Bruckner one, did you see?
Okay. What's that?
Well, that's where I'm asking, where that truck, there's twelve thousand ninety-nine for that truck. What did we do for that there?
I mean, you think it looks like.
Either you were one or two, I think, oh, Rainy was on number one, and you were on number one.
Both of us?
Yes, and I swore.
So it was only two hundred and twenty for one, and two hundred and fifty for the other one, and that was three nights each, that's why six hundred dollars.
You had three, he only had two.
Oh, yeah. Well, I try to shop around, I don't, it doesn't matter, when you're.
I don't see nothing, it looks like just radiator stuff.
Hotel, yeah, but.
Well, there's, there's a description. Oil coolant sensor for coolant tank, reinstall a new coolant sensor.
Cause that has to lease them out, but that's.
What's expandable, oh, file folders?
Yes, oh, employee, yeah.
And for election.
Employee folders.
There must be ten thousand, that's gotta be labor then.
Four thousand labor, shut on the other side, and fourth apart.
What?
I'll fix in this truck, or whatever it is.
Oh, I think that's the one where somebody said they, oh, I think Gordon was telling me about it on Thursday. They had had this truck down there before, and they replaced the radiator, but something happened to this, and they ended up replacing the, um, wiring harness.
Stending sensor.
And she, he said they didn't ask him to do it, and then they got it back, and then the radiator was, something still wrong with it, they called and fixed it.
Do we supply?
Getting a clutch, too.
I don't know.
Well, labors.
Normally, I think, they start out with three hands on three tops, if they're doing.
Okay, well, that's what it was. Cause that truck probably ain't worth that.
Yeah, I mean, you might, yeah.
Twelve thousand. Or, done nothing, that truck would cost twelve dollars, we just paid fourteen for it.
I think it's.
You wanna see that?
The, I think it's.
We fixed the truck twelve grand, a multiple problem.
What's the company name?
G P S Insight.
Getting there, oh, I got another hour and a half.
The early bird specials down at the restaurant, it's time to go eat supper.
If you go down there at five o'clock.
Well, the wires themselves were seventeen hundred bucks.
She's rolling out the cinnamon rolls.
Oh, yeah.
You can watch her do that, smell them, smell her, put them in the oven. She had the number one coming out of the oven this morning.
Yeah, you're there about, what, six?
It must be.
Well, I've seen this, uh.
Quarterly?
Because.
So two, four, six, eight, so like about nine or ten thousand a year?
Yeah, 'cause it's like eleven, one, eight, one, five, one, two, and eleven, eight, five, two, so it's quarterly, so twenty-two, seventy-eight.
I was asking about the G P S program you were asking about, like, so if it's quarterly, we're spending almost ten thousand a year on it, which.
Wow, is that needed? Where's, why do we need that? What'd they do with G P S?
Well, it tracks the pieces of equipment, part of it is, is if, if somebody calls and says so-and-so was out and tore up this road, they can look and see where they even in that.
I'm not opposed to tracking the equipment, but is there a way to do that?
For ten dollars?
With our iPads that they have, or with?
I don't think so, but if you remember, Liz had told you guys that Verizon had stopped by, and thought that they could do it a little bit cheaper. I'm a little still sour with Verizon, but I thought maybe we try to get them back out and figure out cell phones and, and tablets and stuff like that. I just gotta get over being angry about them taking my telephone number for a while.
Oh, they do.
Well, you know, I have an app on my phone, Waze, it tracks me. Well, you know, I have an app on my phone, ways it tracks me.
Yeah, I got GPS on my phone, no cost nothing. I was wondering, uh, does it three-one-one, we have three-one-one, right? Does it have GPS on that, when you're out there?
It does, but it's not like an actual.
It's not connected.
Tracking live.
It's not connected to the actual grader hardware, it's just on your phone, that GPS.
If you're going to court, you may want to have this for.
And see, they can tell you how fast they're going, so if somebody called and said, the truck just blew by my house and they were going seventy miles an hour, they could look it up.
But it seems expensive.
If you have a truck driver that's going over a certain mile per hour, it will alert them and say that they're speeding, so that you can.
We can fire them.
Yeah, well, or, you know, talk to them about it.
It just seems expensive, it's almost a thousand a month. I mean, it's kind of expensive, it's an overhead expense that.
Well, is it needed?
That's a hundred dollars a grader every month.
Maybe we ought to take bids on that, see if we get somebody to.
Well, that's what she was saying, maybe Verizon would do it.
Yeah, I got to say. Whatever, that's, we gotta pay it to them.
Um, oh. Oh, no, we did a motion, okay, it'll be in the minutes. I was gonna say, we didn't do the conversion, but I would say we need to give commission approval, you can remove the recycling department advertisement.
Okay.
Just as a follow-up on that.
Yeah, right, we're gonna, we're gonna have, uh, what's her face, Pelbray.
Oh, okay. First half of taxes for Lincoln Park Manor, twenty-eight oh nine, is that out of this year's budget, or is that?
Yes, um, but I think we normally take it out of Fund Forty-four, what does it say there?
Uh.
Does it say ten sixteen, or, where are we at here? Uh, ten, ten one, oh Hannah, okay, she took it out of County General to fix that. But normally we take it.
What's this additional one? Taxes general?
Um, one of them's gonna be the parcel that, in a garage rental lease agreement, that Sherry Salter and Wendell are renting, and the other one is, uh, north of Coop, and we pay both of those in full, and we only normally do the nursing home first half.
Do we have to pay taxes because they're run as a profitable enterprise?
Yes, because we lease it.
So what was the lea, like, what was the lease amount for the year on one of these compared to the tax bill, or do you know?
Um, I can tell you if you give me a second.
Red dot and stuff.
I wanna say one's fourteen hundred dollars and the other one's seventeen hundred.
So like double, we're making back?
We're rat, like, to Wendell's farm ground up by, uh, the.
Here's the taxes we're paying on those parcels.
But I can look it up.
Yeah.
Are those are only three parcels we pay on? Is that why they're lumped together?
We pay on the nursing home taxes?
Yes.
How much is that a year?
Twenty-eight hundred.
A year?
Twenty-eight oh nine, forty-three.
And when I, I can correct it and take it out of Fund Forty-four. I'm surprised Hannah did that. I think we were just trying to cream everything.
Pass that back, or no, it goes for you.
Okay, I was gonna try to find.
I'm gonna make a motion here to approve this thing. Have you elected?
I'll make the motion to approve it, uh, subject to the movement of the first half of LPM to, uh, line forty-four, is it?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Or Fund Forty-four.
Okay, uh, we just, that's accounts payable, right?
Yes.
Move to, there's been a motion, I'll second, motion to approve accounts payable with the change of taxes for Lincoln Park Manor taken out of Fund Forty-four. Move to second, I, I second.
Okay, okay.
Um, any further discussion?
Let's go.
Do you need a dollar amount, one?
Yes.
Five, four, 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 nine, four, one, four. What is the EDS premium payments?
That's our health insurance bill.
Oh.
You handwrite that in there, or didn't get time to get it printed in there?
We didn't get a bill until late this afternoon.
Oh, that's fine.
So while you guys were in executive session, Hannah.
Okay.
Cut the AP.
Okay.
All right, those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. I'll move to approve payroll. I looked at everything.
I will second payroll. Do we need to have a dollar on that, too?
Yes.
It's, it's, I have it up here, well.
Two hundred, three thousand, five hundred and forty-one, and I'll note that, we had a motion, we had a second, right, Jim, Mr. Gableman? And then, some of that is election, no, those are under accounts payable. So this is everything that's normal, right?
Yep.
All right, those in favor for payroll, vote aye.
Aye.
Vote aye, motion carries. Thank you.
And we got to sign on this one right here. Well, have we ever been this late, have we?
No.
Would I change this, can I order supper?
Should order supper.
Or should I give my homemade?
Your hubby at home taking care of childrens now?
He is taking care of the kids.
Normally they'll do it once a year, they update, but I can email them, is that?
They say, that's pretty late. There you go.
Well, I could send the change back.
No, central regional.
Are we done?
Um.
Okay, so Wendell Salter pays fifteen eighty-nine ninety-four, and Dwayne Hollis pays twenty-five seventy-three thirteen. So I'm assuming that seven hundred dollar one is for North and looking at the parcels.
So we actually make money on those?
Yes.
Cash round, yeah.
And I will bring the lease, I just overloaded that for Salter.
Oh, that, we, we had forty other things going on, I don't know about it.
Yes, and I did not have anything else, cause you guys approved the web. The only thing I had was something personal.
Next meeting's.
May, maybe not personal, no, it's, it's, it's okay. So I may have been looking for the minutes to make sure, I like to listen back to the meetings, make sure I have motions correct, because some of them get a little wordy, Jim. And, um, I came across the post in the Concerned Citizens Day about two or, or three or five.
Oh, the commissioners?
Yes, why I haven't. So we did this the last time we had a one, the one hundred year celebration, and there is only a first, second, and third district for the entire history of Lincoln County.
Okay.
And I wanted to post that, I really thought we had it on our website, couldn't find it on our website, you may post it, um, but I'm not a member of the group, just, I, I.
Yeah.
Go and look, but I, and then I lost track of it, and then somebody said something again about that site, and was like, oh, yeah, I wanted to do that. So that is actually a newspaper that we put out at the hundred year celebration. I think Kathy Crispin did a lot of the research, of her and Jack Crispin.
People would like to have this anyway, I think they'll enjoy that.
And there is that for all of the offices?
Well, I was confused as to why people thought there'd be five, because the districts would have changed, and I've always heard the old adage, you know, would you say it, one twentieth road, or whatever, you know, how they, and, but the western side.
I've always heard three, ever.
Yeah, and so I wondered, plus, if it was due to population change, you know, we've had a gradual steady decline.
Yeah, yeah.
There's no reason to have five, but I know.
That did confuse me.
Well, I don't know what it helped.
Long as you're not a number.
It doesn't necessarily help anything, except.
It'd get more opinion out there from it.
Well, it was being talked about a lot when you had two seats that were occupied by the same people for almost, you know, fifteen years together. Then you're thinking, well, how do you split up that alliance, if it is alliance, I mean, maybe they don't get along, but in that particular situation.
We can blame the district for voting in that many times.
Well, exactly, exactly.
Term, term limits, I mean.
Well, and some people have run on a post.
We could have term limits for commissioners.
I believe in that.
I wouldn't care.
So in that newspaper, there are a lot of, like, all of the history for all of the offices. There are some errors on the sheriff's office, because I think some of them were only two-year terms, and, and so they didn't get those, they only got the ones that were actually elected.
Well, I saw that, some of them in the eighteen hundreds were only a sheriff one year.
What did you say this is called?
Then another one one year.
Um, it's a publication, I've got the newspaper upstairs, I used to have a whole bunch of them, but it must be the last one, but I can show you the, the newspaper, if you remember that.
Neeland was a year, year or two.
Oh, yeah.
It's kind of like a little flyer that.
McMahon.